Welcome to Tuesday, July 7th, regular meeting of the Walnut Creek City Council. This meeting is being held in accordance with the Brown Act as currently in effect under the State Emergency Services Act, the Governor's Emergency Declaration related to COVID-19, and the Governor's Executive Order N-2920 issued on March 17th, 2020 that allows attendance by members of the City Council, city staff, and the public to participate and conduct the meeting by video conference. Video conference locations are not open to the public. As some attendees may be participating in their first Walnut Creek City Council meeting or their first teleconferencing meeting, I want to welcome everyone and talk briefly about the public comment process. For each agenda item, there will be an opportunity for public comment on that item. Thus, if you desire to speak to an item on the agenda this evening, please hold your communications until the council considers that item. Additionally, we have a section in the agenda titled Public Communications, which is for public communications and comments, not on the items not on the agenda. Any comments during the public communication should not relate to an item that is on the agenda for that evening, this evening. When I open the public comment period, use the raise hand feature or press *9 if you're connected by audio only, which will alert the staff that you have a public comment that you would like to provide. Please wait your turn, and once brought into the meeting, state your name and the city of residence for the record. As the council is conducting these meetings via video conference, and given the COVID-19 pandemic and the increased number of speakers that have wanted to make comments on various issues during meetings and consistent with city policies related to public meetings, comments, each speaker will have two minutes to make your remarks. The council will accept only all comments brought in through the Zoom conference. So you're going to need some information. To provide the live public comment, you're going to need the meeting ID 959-6951-1487. You will also need the password 805942. That's 805942. All of the written comments are posted on the city's website, and at this moment, I will ask the council if they have had a chance to look at the website and read the additional, all of the public comments that came in this afternoon and the few additional ones that came in after four. Did you all, I'm going to look for nods. Did you all have a chance to read?
Yes.
Great, okay. Now, should you not provide, want to do public comments but would just like to view the meeting? Or if your item that you wish to make your public comments isn't until the end, we highly suggest that you go to one of the following ways: YouTube Live, which you can get through the City Walnut Creek's YouTube channel; Cable Broadcast, which is Comcast 28 Incorporated in Walnut Creek only; Rossmore Channel 26; Wave Channel 29; and ATT U-verse Channel 99; and Livestream, it's on the city's website. I think I've remembered everything I need to tell you. So let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please join me as I say the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Francois.
Here.
Councilmember Silva.
Here.
Councilmember Waddell.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Wilk.
Here.
And Mayor Haskew.
Here.
All councilmembers are in attendance.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the consent calendar. Does any councilmember wish to pull an item from the consent calendar?
I do, Mayor.
All righty, would you tell me which one?
I.
I. Councilmember Silva, you look like you've got one too.
Yes, I'd like to pull item H.
At this moment, does any member of the public wish to talk about an item on the consent calendar? And remember that these are only in regard to items on the consent calendar, which are the city minutes, the acceptance of warrants, the resolution approving the salary and wage plan, the adoption, establishing annual appropriations limit regarding review of the city's conflict of interest code, authorizing the city manager to execute the First Amendment to the purchase and sale of property, an award contract, downtown fiber optics, the Board of Appeals candidate interviews, and authorize the appointment of two of our councilmembers to serve on our diversity and inclusion task force. If you are going to talk on those items, please raise your hand, and we will go for public comment at this time.
We'll go ahead and bring in Michael Sampson.
I would like to speak on consent calendar item I, the authorization of Kevin Wilk and Matt Francois to serve as council representatives on the Diversity and Inclusion Task Force. I support the idea of a Diversity and Inclusion Task Force. I think that's a really, really good idea, especially in Walnut Creek, a city that's 75% white. We should definitely have a Diversity and Inclusion Task Force. I have a couple of concerns. First, I don't think that Matt Francois should be on the task force. I don't think we need two white men to be on the leadership of this task force. In addition, I want to make sure going forward that when we're selecting the community members who are going to be on the task force, that we make efforts to ensure that we are not picking straight white people to advocate for diversity in our community. I think, I think straight white people have plenty of representation in our government and in our institutions, and so any efforts to improve diversity in our community, we don't really need to be, we don't need to hear their voices in that, in that, in that committee. And then I'm also a little concerned about the last one. So it says right here, "An outside facilitator would be engaged to lead the process and help ensure an unbiased approach to seeking solutions." So I just want to understand, how is it that we're picking this outside facilitator? And what does an unbiased approach to seeking solutions mean in the context of diversity? So what if, for example, the committee proposes an idea, for example, hugely expanding low-income housing in our community as a means of supporting diversity, but that there are real estate groups that don't support this? They prefer to make a higher profit margin on their developments. So how do we weigh those options? I'm just concerned about making makeup of this.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Again, H.
Yes.
Thank you. Speaking on item I, establishment of a task force on diversity and inclusion. We should have no straight Caucasian people on the board, only POC and LGBT people on the board. If one, if a city councilmember has to be on the board, should only have one person, and that should be Wilk, because Wilk supported the pride flag at City Hall. So Wilk, is this time to talk on the budget, or do I need to rejoin for the budget?
Please rejoin for the budget.
Okay, how much time do I have? Oh, 1:27.
As you want to talk about.
So, so yeah, let's, let's, let's make this task force really diverse and, and the best task force around. Let's do the right thing and get the right people on the board. So people of color, LGBT, and then one city councilmember, and that would be Wilk, because of his sensitivity of getting the great pride, the pride flag on the top of City Hall. That's it for me. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Leo James Berry.
All right, everyone hear me all right?
Yes, and I like your avatar.
Thank you. I couldn't think of anything else. My name is Leo. I live here in Walnut Creek. I've lived here all my life. I'd like to speak on I, the Diversity and Inclusion Committee. I think that I second Michael and Dan with having, with having Kevin, if you have to have any, having, Kevin, if you have any city councilmember on the task force, but I'd also urge you to consider including disabled and queer voices, especially disabled and queer people of color. People with disabilities like myself, we often get left out of important conversations like these when we are the ones that get affected by these kind of measures a lot. And queer people especially should also have a voice in this kind of thing. Thank you. That's all I wanted to say. Yield my time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
And we have Joshua Farrar.
Yep, I just wanted to, there you go. First of all, thank all the previous speakers. I agree with all of their good points. Additional point that I want to make is, you know, this is, could be mostly a symbolic move, and I don't want to think, I don't want you to think that just by creating this task force, that the work that everyone on the city council and in city government needs to do on racial equality can just, you know, it's not, it's not a box to be checked. And the actions that happen within that task force don't mean that the real actions that need to happen across the city happen outside it as well. I just want also, some of the direction of the task force, I think it's important to point out. I stayed through the entire seven-plus hour meeting last week, and I was dismayed to find that every single city representative, head of staff, and of course, city councilor is either white or white passing. And I think descriptive representation is really important to creating the kinds of systemic changes that need to happen. It also means looking at representation in the police force, of course. We heard last week someone who had worked in the police force say how it's pretty much an all-white, mostly male affair, and the problems that come up with that. So thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Any more?
Karen.
Are you on mute?
Yeah, I hope you heard me. I basically said, did you not hear anything I said?
Oh, so we're going to start the time right now.
Oh, good. I said I agree with the previous speakers, and that, that basically, I wanted to also talk on item I, the task force. I would point out, Contra Costa County had a racial justice task force. Many people participated in it, and nothing really came about from that. We don't want to see that repeated. I'm reading what your, this, this agenda that you sent us about it, and I'm thinking the wording is, first of all, I have questions. The facilitator, who will choose the facilitator? Will it be the task force members? Will it be, will she or he pick them? Will you pick them? Who's going to pick this facilitator? And also, I have a question about, it was actually, let's see, yeah, about training and, and hiring, and you were going to focus on those things. But there's been much training going on for decades of police forces, and you're dealing with a cultural issue. The police have way too much to handle. They're given too many jobs, as it is, and, and there needs to be funding directed to people, other, other people who can respond, particularly to mental health crises, but other less issues that don't require someone with a, with a gun. And, and I guess those are my points.
Thank you.
I just hope that there'll be action and not just words, because discussion can go on forever, but, but people really would like some kind of action.
Thank you, Karen.
David Rangel. Looks like we lost them. We do have, oh wait, no, there he is. David.
All right, got it. How do I unmute? All right. All right, there we go. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, great. Sorry about that. Hey, my name is David Rangel, since we're talking about diversity and inclusion, I decided to talk right now. I'm a Walnut Creek resident and a retired Walnut Creek PD sergeant. Transparency is one of the worst governmental, that governmental bodies use all the time, but seldom display. I mentioned possible wasteland times. An example could be the entire PD management team, approximately 20 individuals at the direction, direction of Chief Chaplin, spending a few days at Bodega Bay at taxpayer expense for a team building retreat. An audit would show how much more Chief Chaplin and his administration has spent in comparison to Chief Bryden, his predecessor. The chief's most recent management level hire, the Police Services Manager, pays up to $150,000. This position was just created last year. At last week's meeting, Mayor, you said, "All efforts put forward to keep our staff and find ways to keep us as much of our staff. I am your, I'm still your biggest cheerleader." To those that would be furloughed or laid off, take comfort in knowing that the mayor is your biggest cheerleader. Unfortunately, she did not incorporate the lessons learned from the Great Recession. She did not make sure that every cent had been diligently spent during the good times of the economy, and she did not fight, fight against the ever-growing management hires by this chief of police and this city manager. She also says she wants more diversity in Walnut Creek. Hopefully, her cheerleading efforts will result in making sure a qualified and respected law enforcement official becomes the city's first person of color chief of police. There are plenty of lieutenants and captains out there that have the experience and the courage to never give a three-hour stand-down order and leave looting behind or unhindered. As for the protests, for Walnut Creek to be participatory in a specialized unit, that's what, that uses dogs on civil disobedience participants is just ignorant to history of such use. The chief of Martinez, a person of color, said, "In terms of optics, it doesn't look good." Has made a commitment for Martinez's dogs never to be used on such occasions. Would Chief Chaplin make such a commitment? Thank you for your time. Thank you. I left the meeting.
Mayor, there doesn't appear to be any more public comment. Oh, we lost the mayor.
I can take over, because it's actually questions that I wanted to ask.
Can I, can I make a motion to, or maybe Justin was going to do the other items on the consent calendar?
Approval of A through G of the consent calendar, and maybe perhaps we should, there she comes.
Before we vote on it, I'd like to ask some questions.
But Kevin, I think that number H and number I has already, has been pulled. Usually, we approve the ones that have not been pulled, and then discuss some of those that have been pulled.
Can I explain what happened? I got kicked out of the meeting. I was an innocent bystander. I didn't leave intentionally. That being the case, may we have a motion to accept those items that were pulled from the...
A point, point of order, though. I pulled, am I not allowed to ask a question on an item that I pulled?
You're coming back to it, Kevin.
Okay, okay.
Kevin, the motion I made before the mayor came back on was to move approval of the consent calendar items A through G.
My, my mistake.
May I have a roll call? May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Waddell.
Hi.
Councilmember Silva.
Hi.
Councilmember Francois.
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tim Wilk.
Hi.
Mayor Haskew.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Now, we're going to go to item H on the consent calendar, and it was pulled by councilmember Silva. Do you have a comment or a question?
Maybe both. I appreciate that we are getting a few candidates for the Board of Appeals. I do have concern that we should be interviewing those candidates who are qualified to actually do the job for the community. This is not a discretionary review. This is actually a substantive review that I think requires some technical skills, either being an architect, an engineer, a construction contractor, a planner, or an attorney. So I think maybe we have one out of the three of these that are qualified to be interviewed, but I'm also concerned that we may need to have a panel. But I don't want the wrong people on the panel that would not be able to do justice to something that could be millions of dollars to either, to the person who's appealing a decision regarding the California Building Code. So I am willing to move that we interview Marilyn Weiss, but I also would like to ask the city attorney a question. Is there anything in our municipal ordinance that would preclude us form from asking some of our former design reviewer planning commissioners, or even current commissioners that have these qualifications from serving on this board as well? One of the people that serves on the board now also serves in another capacity for us at the county level.
No, there isn't anything that would prohibit the city from doing that. The only thing you want to keep in mind is that if there are existing planning commissioners or DRC members, there is the potential for a project to go through both bodies, and so there's a potential for an incompatibility issue.
That would have to be determined, because a lot of times, these questions that come before the Board of Appeals haven't, never actually went in front of either of those commissioners, even though the entitlements did.
That's, that's correct. So, so I would say, they're not prohibitive from serving, but we would want to make sure that the issues that are presented to them, which is the council's aware, are very rare, frankly, to the Board of Appeals, do not involve issues that they've already issued an opinion, expressed opinion on, because then they would have, then they would not, because of their prior statements, would not be unbiased in their approach.
Got it. Well, and the same reason that any of the people that serve on the Board of Appeals, if they are professionals in the field in some way, shape, or form, they might have to recuse themselves because of the relationship that their own firm, or they might have with the project or the applicant, or the...
That is correct.
The developer. So I guess, as I said, Mayor, I am willing to make a motion, but I don't want to make the motion too fast. Can't hear you.
Are there, yeah. Are there any other questions or comments that, yes, councilmember Francois?
Well, I wanted to start off by saying I share councilmember Silva's concern about this particular board, because it is a specialized board that hears appeals of very technical items related to the building code and the electrical code and things like that. As a land use attorney representing a client, I would want to make sure that that client was heard before a fair and objective board that had the credentials to consider the matter. So I think it is important that we carefully consider the qualifications of these individuals. I do believe that a former DRC member, Marilyn Weiss, is qualified, but I think we have to do some targeted recruitment to find other individuals who would be capable of serving on this body. And I, I think if we just wait for them to come to us, we might be waiting a long time. So we might need to be a little more strategic in this. And, and to the city attorney, just to follow up, I guess in the unlikely event an appeal were to be filed from an active DRC determination to the board, I can't see that factual scenario really happening, but if it did, and that active DRC member were also on the Board of Appeals, is it possible that could be cured through that, that member abstaining as a Board of Appeals member?
Yes, it could. You would just have to ensure that you have, you still have a quorum afterwards for the Board of Appeals to be able to conduct this. Right now, the city has a Board of Appeals of five positions, of which I believe two are filled right now.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Those are my questions.
Another question. The way our ordinance is written, it's five members and two alternates. We don't have alternates for any of our other commissions. Are those two alternates eligible to serve in the case in which a commissioner or a member of the Board of Appeals needs to recuse himself or herself or is not available because of the randomness of when this might occur?
Yes.
Okay, so we do have the ability, if we can get seven, we have the ability to be able to respond.
Correct. And you also have the ability to be able to deal effectively with potential conflict issues. effectively with potential conflict issues.
Thank you. Mayor, if, I'm happy to make a motion.
Would you please make a motion?
I move to interview, to schedule an interview with former Design Review Commissioner Marilyn Weiss for the Board of Appeals and to encourage all of us to actively invite those we think who would be qualified to apply so that we can fill these positions.
Alright, we have a motion in a second. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Francois.
Aye.
Councilmember Waddell.
Aye. I have your in the eye.
Got it. Mayor Pro Tem Wilk.
Aye.
And Mayor Haskew.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
And may I just say, I really appreciate that people are interested in serving in the city. So hopefully, the, those who we chose not to interview will be told, you know, about other opportunities that we have. And I know you will do that.
Okay, we're on to item next. And it looks like Mayor Pro Tem has some, has pulled it and has some comments. So please...
Alright, and I apologize. I, you know, sometimes...
So anxious.
Yeah, I know. No, I just didn't understand that. That's the motion that councilmember Waddell was making, but my fault entirely. I apologize. So I did have a couple of questions, and I'd like to ask whoever the staff member on this will be. And is that you, Terry?
Yes.
Great, great. Well, thank you. First of all, I'm glad that we're able to move so quickly on this. I had made the motion just a couple of meetings ago, and, and here we are. So I'm glad to see this. So I, a couple of points. So first of all, is it normal for there to be two members from the council on task forces?
I, my understanding is yes. The, the, the way the ad hoc and committee structure slash task force is set up, that it is two council members that are selected to sort of chair the efforts on behalf of the larger council.
Okay, great. And can you, are you able to explain how applications for the task force to community members will be noticed and then submitted? And how, and how that just, I don't need the specifics, but just the kind of generalities would be helpful to hear.
Sure. And I might actually back up a step, which is that you may remember that we are in the process of interviewing consultants to lead us through our community listening sessions around mental health and implicit bias. And during that process, we encountered, countered several consultants who have expertise in guiding these types of task force efforts. And so our first thought is, we need help. We need someone who has some deep expertise in this area to guide us both in how to, how to structure the task force more fully, as well as how to best interview and select membership. Our intention is that we'll have a consultant, hopefully selected here by July 20th. And then the goal is to quickly figure out what that application process looks like. We'll be publishing it through the city's social media, on our web pages, and we'll do our best to make sure it gets out to everyone in the community. We'll be looking for residents of incorporated or unincorporated Walnut Creek to participate. And then we also expect that there will be a small portion of the group that represents city staff. I've already personally been approached by several people who are very interested. And we assume the representatives will come from city manager's office, the police department, arts and recreation, and human resources. But that the majority of the seats are reserved for community members who are both demographically as well as geographically representative of the city of Walnut Creek.
Thank you, Terry. And will the, this, the staff members there that are chosen for this, whether it's the police department or other departments, will they also be demographically represented, representative?
That is the goal. That is the goal. We, I, I believe that we'll be asking for people who are interested in participating. So hopefully, we will garner interest from across our organization.
I can say I've already received a number of emails just to me from the community once they saw this and asked how they could be part of this. And I told them, "It'll be noticed. Make sure you can submit the application." And my last question then is, will the choice for who the moderator is, will that come back to city council for approval? Or are you going to wait until the process is further down the road?
I, we're hopeful that whoever's selected to sit on the, this task force from the council will participate with us in the selection process. Whether that needs to come back to council depends on kind of the size of the contract. And so if it's within regular purchasing guidelines and there's agreement on the best firm to utilize, we would probably opt to move more swiftly to get that person on board as quickly as possible.
Great, thank you. So then my, just the comments that I'll, I'll make on this is that...
Kevin, can we, could, could, can I ask for the question?
Other questions? Absolutely.
Thank you. Councilmember Silva.
Thank you. So I, Terry, thank you for the insights. The, the source of this is not just about police and criminal justice. This is a broader look at inclusion, diversity, et cetera.
That's correct. You know, our, our initial thinking on the topic is that it'll be providing input on some of the internal and external city policies that we have in place that may, may be precluding everyone from participating fully. We'll be talking about our communication strategies to make sure that we're really inclusive as we approach communicating with our residents. And then we'll be looking for ways to find ways to make Walnut Creek feel even more welcoming and inclusive. And so it's not just about mental health or race or policing. It's really throwing open the whole gamut of ways we interact with the community and looking for ideas of what else could we do and what can we do better.
And so you're currently looking at selecting a facilitator for the listening sessions. Are you suggesting that whoever is selected would become the facilitator for this? Or was, did I just mishear what you said?
No, I think I may not have said it clearly enough. There's a possibility. There's at least one firm in the, in the running for the listening sessions that also has this as one of their areas of expertise. But then there were a couple other people who didn't have expertise that we were looking for in the listening sessions who may be a good fit here. So it's not necessarily, but it could be the same firm, depending on how the interviews go.
But to understand the process, you will be selecting the facilitator before you start selecting the task force members because the facilitator might provide guidance in what should be on the application and what questions should be asked to ensure that we're not inadvertently being biased or uninclusive through the application process?
That's absolutely correct.
Okay. And in, alright, thank you. Thank you, Terry.
Councilmember Francois.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Terry, for the report. Either to you or the city manager, just in terms of the composition and structure of the task force, my understanding is that it would be made up primarily of community members or, or members with a Walnut Creek address, representing kind of a diverse background from all across the city and that it'd be structured similar to the Blue Ribbon Task Force that we convened a few years back to deal with the economic recession. Is that right? And I, just to be more specific, that my understanding was the council members who are on the subcommittee for the Blue Ribbon Task Force took a little less, a little less active role. And really, it was a community-driven process that resulted in a report that reflected the ad hoc committee's involvement, but it came back to the full council for review and input.
I think that's a great model. We can certainly follow that if that's the, the ad hoc committee's direction. Our thinking is that for staff, we'd limit it to five or six members, depending on level of applications. But that the vast majority of the positions would be reserved for the community participation.
Okay, thank you.
I will affirm, because I was on the council during the Blue Ribbon Task Force. I was mayor that year and, and our mayor this year was on the Blue Ribbon Task Force. The council subcommittee, which was the finance committee, attended the meetings, but we did not weigh in in an, in an attempt not bias the members of the task force in, to weigh them. And hopefully, we achieved that objective, but well, it would be able to confirm or deny.
Yeah, that's pretty much the case.
We can certainly accommodate that model if that's the council's desire.
Yeah, well, the people who were assigned might have an input. Does any, either the people proposed, can both of you live with that definition?
Yes.
That would be my, my preference, really. Yes, I, I view this, and I, I talked to the Mayor Pro Tem about this, as an opportunity to listen and learn so that we can believe as a result. So that, that's how I would be approaching it.
Yes. And are there other questions?
Okay, you're gonna take over the meeting?
I'll make my comment.
Okay, go for it.
Well, I appreciate the trust that the speakers have, have mentioned regarding our ability to be able to have this type of a task force. And it sounds like Terry and the staff is paying attention to the community's desires on the broad makeup of that demographically, and I appreciate that. And I appreciate the trust that the speakers have, have in me in being a member of this task force. And with that, I ask them to also trust me that I fully believe in councilmember Francois being my colleague on this task force. He not only is from the area of where Miles Hall lived, I've gotten to know councilmember Francois for the last several, four years, five years prior to my even being on council. He's compassionate, intelligent, thoughtful, and I think he'll make an excellent colleague and leadership partner on this task force. And with that, I would like to make a motion to approve the authorization of the appointment of myself and councilmember Francois to serve as the council representatives on the Diversity Inclusion Task Force.
And I would, I would like to take the second because I true, when I proposed both of you to the, to the assignment, it was because I very carefully thought of the qualities that you both bring to it. And I appreciate the fact that you both stepped up and publicly stated you wanted to be on it, even though I had my eye on you from the start. So thank you very much. And I second the motion. Now, can I have a roll call vote?
Can I make a brief comment, Mayor, before we get to that?
I guess so, because I had time, yeah.
I, I appreciate the vote of confidence from both of you. That means a lot to me. And I think in addition to some of the comments we heard tonight, I've already heard, seen the need to maybe broaden this from what we had originally envisioned to make sure that we're dealing, that we've included disabled people, that we've included LGBTQ plus, and that we have really, not are just looking this as a racial thing, but a, a larger diversity and inclusion committee. I think that's important. And I'm excited to serve on this with the Mayor Pro Tem. One item that a dear friend brought to my attention today is, in addition to diversity and inclusion, let's not forget compassion. And I think that that would be a welcome addition to this committee. And I, I would promise to serve with that viewpoint in mind. And just, just for the record, the Mayor Pro Tem certainly led the charge on the pride flag and declaration. But I'm proud of this council for having unanimously supported that both last year and this year.
Now, I think we're ready for the roll call vote. Please.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilk.
Aye.
Mayor Haskew.
Aye.
Councilmember Francois.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
And councilmember Waddell. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. And now, this is the moment for public communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for comments on items not on the agenda. Under the Brown Act, the council cannot act on items raised during public communications, but may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed, request clarification, or refer the item to staff. Does any member of the public wish to provide comments on this item, which is not an item? And the only other item that is coming, if you're here to talk about the budget item, that is the last item on the agenda, please wait until that time to make your comments. So I believe we do have some people queuing up, and I will ask the city clerk to take control.
Okay, Steve S.
Yes, hi. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to address the council again. You may recall that I've appeared at the last couple of meetings to speak about a couple of issues, and I'd like to bring them up again because as far as I know, no council member has stepped forward being willing to propose these things. But first and foremost, I'd like to see the city of Walnut Creek ban the future use of tear gas. I was shocked and dismayed when I heard that tear gas had been used against protesters in the city of Walnut Creek. Tear gas is a chemical weapon. It was developed as a weapon of war. It is not a humane tool under any circumstances, but certainly not in the case of peaceful protesters. As the chief admitted, it was used back in early June. So it's a simple proposal. I don't think any further analysis is required. Either you believe that tear gas is a legitimate weapon that can be used against the civilian population or you don't. And I, I don't think it is legitimate, and I'd like to see the city ban it. Secondly, I'd like to see the city adopt in its entirety the eight can't wait recommendations. Secondly, I'd like to see the city adopt in its entirety the eight can't wait recommendations. There are a number of different ways in which the city, while I do appreciate that the city is further along than many others, there are a number of ways in which the city's implementation differs from those recommendations. For example, requiring comprehensive reporting on not only the actual use of force, but the threatened use of force. In other words, if a police officer draws their weapon and threatens someone with a gun, requiring reporting on that, as well as the actual discharge of a weapon. My understanding is that the city rules do not require reporting on that. So that's just one example, but those are my two issues. I'd like to see the city adopt both of those. I'm going to keep showing up and advocating for them, and I'd be interested in working with any council member who's interested in proposing either of those things. I'd be happy to help in terms of drafting something or getting a petition going. I'm interested in the process and what it takes to get that in front of a vote of the council. So please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Another speaker, please.
Hadi Mitchell.
I'm here today to, it's really a question and try to get some clarification on public comments in general. I was sent an email yesterday from the city of Walnut Creek that gives the process for making public comments and submitting written comments. And I noticed in there that it said this each speaker is afforded up to three minutes. And I know when I've appeared before the council before on behalf of Alarkey Park Neighbors United, we had three minutes for our neighbors, and as a group, we also had 10 minutes to be able to present, present as a group. And I know we don't want to stay here until 2:00 in the morning on several meetings, and I've been to several that have lasted into the wee hours. But to me, I, you know, the public clearly wants to talk and really wants to be heard on a number of different topics, not just some of the ones that I have spoken on recently. So I'm wondering what the process is for limiting it to two minutes and, and also not making mention of someone speaking on behalf of a group. And so that, that's my comment right now. It, it feels like there is more of a need and a want to interact with the council, or at least be able to express, express our opinions and ask questions. And the limiting it to two minutes is really, really difficult. It's a really difficult limit to put on, on this. So, so I'm just wondering what process is how that gets decided? And, and what about people who are speaking on behalf of a larger group and can bring that together? So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Sampson.
So I want to speak about public safety in general. So after the recent shooting, the one that happened yesterday on Ignacio, there is a fresh focus on ensuring that Walnut Creek remains a safe community and that we enact measures to ensure that it remains a safe community in the future, to prevent future violence. Our reflex in situations like this is generally to increase police funding. We need to be wary of this reflex. It may seem counterintuitive, but increasing or even maintaining police budgets will not make us safer. I'll explain. First, understand the police do not prevent crime. The police, they police crime. The odds of an officer being able to respond quickly enough to actually prevent a crime is slim to none. So if we want to actually prevent crime, then we have to ask ourselves, why are people committing crime? So is it because humans are inherently selfish and violent, and that therefore a thin blue line is the only thing separating us from the barbarians at the gate? And that therefore any cuts to police, whether it be personnel, pay, destructive capability, et cetera, any cuts would result in more barbarians making it past the thin blue line? And that therefore a stronger police force necessarily results in greater community safety? So a lot of us would respond yes to all those questions. However, I would respond with this. If there were no police around, would you steal? Would you hurt people? Would you kill people? Hopefully, the answer is no, because why would you? You are a good person who wants to do the right thing. Your physical and psychological needs are being met. You aren't desperate or destitute. Why would you risk all of that just to steal or commit acts of violence? So I would argue that if we actually want safe communities, we should ensure that everyone's basic needs are met, that no one is desperate, no one is destitute. Allocating our resources towards ensuring material well-being for all people is the single best way to reduce crime. If there's less crime, then there's less need for police. So that's why we need to defund the police in every city in the Bay Area and reinvest in programs that support those who are most vulnerable and marginalized. By doing this, Walnut Creek will be safer, more vibrant, and more just. Thank you.
Good job, Michael. Thank you. Any more?
Leo James Berry.
Hello, me again. I just want to say that we still do need a mental health crisis response unit. That's what both asked and pushing for, whether it's you make your own or we still re, like utilize the community once for that one. That's something that we could fund, that we could fund if we started defunding the police. I'm sure you'd find people who are interested in supporting that. And it wouldn't just benefit those of us who are currently mentally ill. It would benefit people, it could benefit people that you know, like your loved ones, even if they aren't mentally ill, because being mentally healthy isn't a permanent state that can change at any time. You can, you can be in a car crash and develop PTSD, and you may need mental health services. You, you might have an elderly relative that develops like dementia, and then, sorry, my dog's being a butt. And then you may need those services for your family members. And so it's really just important for anyone, whether they need it now or not. Thank you. Yield my time.
All right.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Jenny, you're here.
Thank you very much. Good evening. My name is Jenny Schneider, and I'm here on behalf of justiceformileshall.org. On the Walnut Creek Gov page, under the City Council tab, there is something under Legislative Platform, and it states, "The city council adopts a legislative platform each year to serve as a framework for state advocacy efforts. The city employs a lobbyist, Townsend Public Affairs, to act as the voice for the city and Walnut Creek on all state legislation." In the City Council Hound Book that you created, and under, and which was approved on February 5th, 2019, under Mayor Cindy Silva and members of the Walnut Creek City Council, the Townsend Public Affairs recommended, made recommendations for that year. "Under particular areas of focus and supporting the city's interest in additional funding for homeless services and mental health outreach teams, as well as for programs targeting at-risk youth, Townsend Public Affairs summarized and recommended the following," and I quote, "Over the past decade, California peace officer standards and training has not been properly funded, lending to fewer reimbursements for training of police officers and dispatchers. With increasing levels of mandatory mandated training, including crisis intervention training, the need to provide ongoing training is vital. Proper funding leads to more options for training, and the city supports adequate state funding for the post-commission and continued state reimbursement of training funds for local law enforcement." Yet in 2019 and 2020, of your four city council priorities, public safety was not listed. Now, on February 4th, 2020, under Mayor Luella Haskew, the same agency proposed the following. Wow, that was quick. Can I just say it add, you had the same thing as you did the year before, but then this year you added peace officers and the need for mental health. And beside your diversity inclusion task force, I really hope that you guys take to heart what they recommended in this report.
Got to be fair for everybody. Thank you.
Dan H.
Ban the use of gas on teenagers in the future. No more tear gas to our teenagers on the freeway. There was literally three protesters in front of the SWAT tank, and they were tear gassed. It was not a large group. It was not out of control. If you need me to show you some pictures, I can send you the pictures. It was gross negligence. So in the future, let's not do that anymore and ban, ban the use of tear gas. Also, please hear us for the 24/7 Mental Health Crisis Unit. That's needed ASAP, paid for by this Walnut Creek City Police Budget. reallocate the funds. Again, 24/7 Mental Health Crisis Unit. That's what the city needs. We don't need tear gas. If you need pictures of what happened on the freeway, Phil, I can go ahead and email you the pictures. You're using war materials, weapons on our citizens in front of us. Lived in Walnut Creek my, almost my whole life, and what I was appalled to see tear gas employed on our teenagers, on our kids. So when Stevens stepping up and proposing ban of tear gas week after week, I think you guys should listen to him. I'm listening to them. June 1st, we were tear gassed. Our kids were tear gassed on, on the freeway. Three teenagers in front of a tank. If you need pictures, if anybody needs pictures, go ahead and Google these pictures. Simple Google search.
Thank you, Dan.
Mayor, it doesn't appear we have additional comments.
Thank you.
Well, their hands, hands are going up now.
Oh, okay. Well done. They signed in after. Okay.
Kelly Ho.
Hello.
Hi, Kelly.
Hi. Sorry, I wasn't planning on speaking, but I just knew I had to jump in somehow to, of course, also echo the fact that you should ban tear gas. I, I was on the freeway and even talking about it, I just feel like, like I will forever be like emotionally scarred from that and psychologically messed up from that, just hearing the noise just go off. I'm like shaking right now, but hearing the noise go off like literally three, three feet in front of me, like I will never forget that. And you can imagine how I felt being, you know, on 4th of July, just hearing all of those things go off, because it is deeply unnerving and scary to be a part of. And, you know, I never would have expect, expected something like that to happen here in Walnut Creek. But it, so I, I want to say that, but I also want to mention that I, I am still very wary about the, the race and diversity inclusion committee, just because I'm, I'm just scared. I don't know what's going to come out of it, and I, I don't think that, you know, it's, it's going to do much good for, from a community that has a lot, a lot of races, a lot of white supremacy going on here. And, and this is just from me, like, living here for nine months, okay? And I, and I'm, again, I don't feel safe. I'm not happy here because I'm, I'm deeply scared every single day and protesting on the corner and having people like scream at us for no reason and flash, I don't know, like hand gestures. I'm sure I'm not supposed to flash here. Like, I, I don't know if y'all know that, but you need to understand that this is deeply rooted in this community also. And my last point that I want to make, I think it was deeply unfair for Mr. Wilk to do a poll on Nextdoor for defund or not defund the police. And I think that there should have been another way to gauge community on that issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lindsay Sweetnun.
So in listening to people on all sides of the defund the police issue, it seems like we do actually all have one thing in common, and that is that we want a safe community. The difference seems to be what we think makes a community safe. How do we get and maintain safe community, community? And I just want to really echo everything that Michael Sampson said about when people's basic needs are met, that really goes a long way, and I think we should spend a lot of time and effort on that. When people hear defund the police, I think what they're hearing is that safety is going to disappear overnight and there will be chaos. But what they fail to realize, and what I ask all of you to consider very seriously, is that the police, both by design since their inception and today, only create safety or in many cases perceived safety for a very small group of people, and everyone deserves safety. By reallocating resources to other areas, we can create safety for all. This is solvable, but it will require a willingness to take a serious look at where we have failed over and over again. So I ask you again, ban the use of tear gas, adopt eight can't wait in its entirety, continue to work on a 24/7 mental health response team. I appreciate that there's been continued conversation on this. I hope we'll hear an update tonight and every single time that we come together. Make the diversity and inclusion task force a true agent for change. I appreciate most of what I heard Terry say about the intent to consider both internal and external policies and communication, the inclusion of people of color, LGBT community, considering the disability community and more. I was a bit dismayed at the response to the question, I believe it was Mayor Protem Wilk's, I'd really be representative, and the response was, that's the goal. I don't want that to be the goal. I, I want a firm commitment to that it will be representative. So I, I hope to see that. And again, defund the police. Thank you.
Thank you, Lindsay.
Vivian McHenry.
Okay, you guys able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay, super. This thing is so strange. There's definitely delay. I guess you know that already. So listen, yeah, I'm so glad that the last caller jumped on there, because, and I know that this is going to, we know that this is going to continue to be a scary thing. Change is scary, you know? And sometimes slogans don't paint the full picture. But, so I will first echo what the last caller said, which was, you know, defund the police, the full slogan is, and invest in community. And it does not mean abolish the police. It means reallocate. I mean, maybe for some few people it does, but what, what it means is very clearly spelled out on the ACLU website. Go to Brookings Institute, Brookings Institute, that is. Go to the NAACP Legal Defense Fund website. Obviously, go to Black Lives Matter website. Actually, take the time to get yourself up to speed and educated. I was not aware that a poll was taken on Nextdoor of all places. That is the most toxic site I have ever had the misfortune of being involved in. So that is unfortunate. Try to really go to the actual sources and get yourselves educated on it, because there are cities, major cities across the country, San Francisco, LA, Baltimore, Camden, New Jersey, I mean, all the way across the country, cities that have way more high, higher crime rates than Walnut Creek, and less money on a revenue on a per capita basis than Walnut Creek, that are absolutely reallocating, reducing and divesting from police unions and police, militarized police budgets, and investing in community and people and experiencing low, safer communities, more equitable communities, which hopefully that truly is your goal. The other thing I would say is I do not, I'm appalled by the lack, by the lack of accountability and response to what happened on June 1st. The way that civilians were treated with militarized response is absolutely unacceptable. We won't stand for it, and we won't let it go.
Thank you, Vivian.
Ton Hall.
Thank you. Ton. Ton, oh, good. Okay.
Okay. All right. So Miles Hall.
It's lost your picture.
So Miles Hall was killed on June 2nd by untrained, overreactive police officers. They weren't compassionate. My son, who was having a mental health emergency, and I believe that if Miles was white, he would be alive. I want to address people who don't understand what happened to my son. He didn't have a weapon, and he needed help and needed to be taken to a hospital. Miles was trying to run home, and the police blocked his way. He was scared, and he was a victim. He was a black man who was shot down when he was trying, wasn't trying to harm anyone. And as we have seen with George Floyd, that his life didn't matter to those police, police officers. This is why we say Black Lives Matter. I've been hearing all lives matter a lot lately, and I just wanted to address that. Those who think all lives matter are missing the point, while the intention of the phrase "all lives matter" may put everyone's life on equal footing and convey a sense of unity. Responding "all lives matter" to "black lives matter" is actually more divisive than unifying. That's because it discounts and diminishes the focus of violence and discrimination that black individuals place in this country every day. At the most basic level, it shows that there's a shift for black people, because they're killed at much higher rates than white people. Actually, in 2015, it was 7.2 million white people over to the 2.9 million black people. That's why we are saying that black lives matter. So I just want to say that to my, all those people on Nextdoor, on the app, who somehow don't understand what we're trying to say is that black lives matter, and we want to be equal. So I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ton.
I take that back. It looks like, oh, here he is.
I just want to say, yeah, it's really amazed me that you've heard hours and hours and hours of testimony from concerned community members, from people who were at the protests that happened a few weeks ago, about the police actions, about how people have been traumatized by police, not just there, but just in living, especially as people of color in Walnut Creek. And there's not been a single note of recognition about any of this trauma, about any of the pain that police officers have inflicted upon people. And I'm just amazed that the lack of accountability that comes from the city council, how you can hear about people, see these pictures, and just not a single word of complaint, not a single word spoken against the police. I don't know if it's, it comes down to politics, if you're worried that if you, you know, say anything critical of the police, then, then the people who, you know, who support you will, will vote you out. I don't, I don't know what the, what the issue is. But just, you know, you were talking- Um, but just, you know, you were talking about human dignity earlier, just from a single basic stance of, can you see someone suffering? No, can you recognize, um, their lived experiences? And I've seen nothing. Um, and then I also just want to say a moment, I hope all of you, um, you know, we've been calling on you to educate yourself about these issues, about racial justice. And I really hope, um, that you have been. But in case you need to know what reading material to read, um, you know, top 10 New York Times, um, the books have been all over. Uh, but, um, so you want to talk about race? Um, The New Jim Crow by Michelle Alexander is a great book, White Fragility, which is by a white offer. Um, but maybe that's, you know, where we're at. We need to learn about why we don't, why we're uncomfortable talking about race. I really encourage you as city council members to pick up some of these books and take them seriously. And then I think, um, you'll start understanding what some of them are saying. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job, Joshua.
We have user L K.
L K, are you, are you on mute? Give it a few more seconds and then if it doesn't come through, okay. We can't hear you. You're on mute if you're talking.
Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry. I'm very sorry about that. So I just, I just wanted to make a statement about folks that are saying all lives matter. To say all lives matter at this point in time, yes, of course, all lives matter. But to pick this point in time to say that, it's, it's really meant to diminish Black Lives Matter in the movement. And so if you really think all lives matter, then you really shouldn't have any problem with Black Lives Matter. So I just, just wanted to call that out and ask people that are saying all lives matter to be thoughtful about the context in which they say that. Then just a second quick comment is the diversity committee. I, I think you got to be careful there too because to many people, that, that's an insult to not have people of diversity on the diversity committee. It's, it's demeaning and insulting at worst. And at best, you're going to miss out on what you're hoping to achieve, which is to get that voice. So perhaps it shouldn't be called the diversity committee. Uh, maybe come up with a different name and readdress and revisit the idea of a diversity committee. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Izzy.
Hello, um, I'm Izzy Rusuli. I was born and raised in Walnut Creek. Um, I went to high school Los Lomas when we passed measure A about 10 years ago. I think council members, so you worked on that too. I know that's a state issue or not a city government issue, but that was a problem in our community that we worked on together. There was a lot of tragedies when I was in high school that died and we all came together as a community and provided support for each other. So I just don't really see why all the issues that are happening today with police brutality, with what happened to Miles, with what happened at the protests. Why aren't we coming together to try and support the community in this instance? Is it because it's kind of going against something within our own institutions, as in the police department, as in you guys? Just because that's the case doesn't mean that we shouldn't address it and work on it together. It just feels like week after week, we're talking to a wall. And I know you guys are frustrated because I can see it on your faces. And I know we're all frustrated, but all this public comment for eight hours every week, it doesn't really seem like it's going anywhere. You guys don't provide any justification to us. You guys don't give us any reasoning for why we're not defunding the police the way that we're asking, but we are from arts and rec. Um, these are all parts of the community that we could work on together, just like we have in the past. Um, and these ones are more life or death than those ones, if anything. So I just want you guys to really think about like, why there's such apprehension within your group to do what the community is asking for. I know we don't represent the entire community of Walnut Creek, but we're the ones who are coming here and talking to you. So that's all.
Good job. Thank you, Jeff. Izzy.
Jesse Lovegood.
Hello. Thank you. Um, I just wanted to take a minute to thank Kelly Ho for her courage and her display of her vulnerability in speaking to the council and the public about her experience on the highway on June 1st, um, when the tear gas canister went off in front of her. I spoke a few weeks ago about fear-based policing and how that should not be, how we interact with our communities and how we protect and serve our communities. Her display of emotion and her fear and the PTSD symptoms that she experienced just a few days ago on the 4th are direct results of fear-based policing. And as she said, she will carry those scars and hopefully be able to heal to some degree from them. But she will always have that, that trauma with her now. And that is a result of the policing strategies that our police department and our community partners have decided to weaponize against our citizens. So I again, I'm asking for you to ban the use of tear gas, rubber bullets, um, and other quote unquote, less lethal, uh, crowd control measures. And to think more critically about how we can really be useful to our community. I again want a 24/7 mental health line and crisis response and for you to defund the police. Yield my time.
Thank you, Jesse.
Owen Smith.
Okay. Hello again. I have more, more questions. The longer I, I stay tuned into what you're doing. I have this sense that all the decisions about the budget and about, uh, a lot of these, uh, police-related matters have all been made and that we're just kind of hearing an echo of our own voices as we address you. But specifically I was, I was wondering if there had been any more thinking, uh, about why you are, let me pull that off so you can see me, about, so why you are, um, increasing the police budget as a percentage of the total city budget at this time. And, uh, kind of slap the face, I guess, to all those people, but, you know, I, I keep thinking back on the sacrifices that are being made at center rep and, uh, trail maintenance, library hours and things like that. And I'm, I'm really seeing a degradation of some of the better services, uh, that the city provides that make it a nice place to live. And somehow, despite all the controversies, lawsuits that are, that have arisen and the violence that seems to be coming, uh, against, uh, the, uh, the people engaged in civil disobedience. It, it seems, uh, strange to me that we're looking at, uh, an increase in the police budget at this time. And, uh, complete decimation of center rep and some of the other things that a lot of people in the community die. Anyway, that's my question to you. And I really don't know the process, but I'm going to give you back all five seconds of my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Owen.
Mara Flynn.
Hi there. Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, Mar. Yes.
Oh, great. 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 Okay. Um, my name is Mara Flynn Rothman. And, um, I've been part of the Walnut Creek community for 28 years. Raised, uh, two sons here in the Walnut Creek schools. And I currently live in Larky Park neighborhood and work here in Walnut Creek. And, um, I grew up in a political family in Southern California. Um, but when I moved up to Northern California, I, I, you know, I never have really gotten involved with our, um, our local city government. But I'll tell you what the catalyst has been, and it's been the death of Miles Hall. Um, Miles should not have been killed by the police. Um, and I believe that this is showing a huge flaw in our system that needs to be addressed. I don't think that, um, what I heard last week and, um, you know, maybe there's been an update, I hope, but, um, that there was going to be a hundred thousand dollars spent on training. And I don't believe that's enough. Um, I think that a lot more money needs to be spent to address that and the fact that our police, um, behaved like military when we were having a demonstration, um, in early gym. And I, I don't agree with that either. Um, these, we're in a different time right now. We're in a pandemic and I think that it's very, very important that the budget is, is really thought out a little more carefully than what I was hearing last week. Um, you know, the fact that the police budget was only going to be cut by 3.3% is, I believe, what I heard. And other communities are, are cutting a considerable amount. Like I heard that Berkeley is cutting, I believe, 12% from their police budget and they're allocating their money towards social services. I think that is necessary in Walnut Creek to address, um, the, the problems that we have with our, you know, having. I guess my time is up.
It is. I think you made your point and I appreciate it. Thank you very much. All right.
I don't see any more speakers.
All righty then. Um, I'm going, the next item is the last.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If I could.
For a break.
No, I'm fine on a break. Thank you.
Okay.
Regulating my water consumption. But just for, um, all the speakers who spoke, and, and a lot of them were heartfelt. I just want to remind everyone of the process and, and maybe the city attorney can do it, that, that what we just heard was public communications. And public communications is for items that are not on the agenda. So items that we didn't post on the agenda and say where we're going to discuss. And that's a result of a state law called the Brown Act. And the Brown Act was passed for the purpose to make sure that we don't talk about things that people don't get notice about. So, uh, as the city attorney wants to elaborate, I just wanted to make sure that that's clear because some of the speakers are saying, why aren't you responding? Why aren't you saying something? And it's because you're addressing us during public communications where the law says we can't respond because it's not on our agenda.
That, that is correct, council member, that, that when you're in the public communications, the public comments section of the agenda, the council has very limited options. You can refer an item for future consideration. Um, you can ask a follow-up question, but you cannot actually discuss the issue substantively. If the council wishes to discuss an issue substantively that has been raised in the public comments section of the meeting, then you would directly come back to you at a subsequent agenda.
And that agenda would be noticed so that people would have the alert and they could come and attend and raise comments then.
Uh, that is correct. And then as, as the council's aware, some of the comments that you just heard, um, at least portions of them, if not the entirety, would have, you know, been related as much to your budget discussion that is coming up on the agenda tonight too.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to clarify.
Mayor, I have a couple of questions. For the city attorney, one of the questions, and I think we need some clarification on it, um, had to do with the amount of time we allow individual speakers. And I know that in our regular meetings, when we're in the council chambers where it's, um, before COVID, um, we had allowed up to three minutes, but are, actually, can you explain why we have gone to two minutes? We say it each time. I hear the mayor say it number, a numerous, number of times, but do we have the authority to go to shortened, shortened timeframe?
Yes, you do. The, the council handbook does, um, establish that the mayor has the authority to adjust the, uh, time period for public comments. And we have been doing that during the pandemic to two minutes. And we've applied that consistently throughout all of the meetings. That does allow us also to transition from one speaker to another, which in this environment does take longer than it does at, at an in-person council meeting. The other comment that was raised, um, by that same speaker, I think, was the opportunity for groups to speak as well, and whether or not they can be allocated a larger period of time. And as the council's aware, you do have a process where you can have a group spokesperson that speaks on behalf of the entire group and can have an extended period of time, up to 10 minutes, if the council recognizes that typically to ensure that, um, the council meetings can continue on and efficiently and that, um, that, uh, other members of the public have an opportunity to talk. If you do grant additional time to a particular group, that's, that's intended to be in exchange for not every member of the group talking as well too, so that it's not 10 minutes plus all of the additional times that's in lieu of. And that, and the council's done that, uh, both while we, in a couple of instances where we've been on Zoom and in many instances when the council was still meeting in person before the pandemic.
Thank you. And I had a question for the city manager. Um, there was one speaker who referenced our legislative platform, both in 2019 and now in 2020. And I think there might've been some confusion as to what a legislative platform is as opposed to a council priorities. And perhaps, um, Dan, you can explain what that, what a legislative platform is.
Sure. Dan Buckshai, city man, manager for the record. Legislative platform serves a couple of purposes. So it's really intended because of the way the Brown Act works and requires your council to hold formal meetings to weigh in on various matters. And you can't provide direction on a one-off basis, or even a couple of you behind the scenes because of the Brown Act requirements. You know, we're not able to respond as quickly as we might like when it comes to legislation in Sacramento or at the federal level, but we're really focused on, on state government and being able to potentially influence policy at that level. So what a practice is to help with that because oftentimes we will receive inquiries from members of the legislature in Sacramento, wanting an answer on the city's position on various matters within a couple of hours' notice before a key committee hearing, or certainly within a couple of days before we would able to legal, be able to legally convene a meeting of the, of the council. Not to mention, we receive a lot of requests along those lines. So legislative platform is intended to anticipate the big issues that are occurring in Sacramento and where the council is relative to those matters. So that staff and/or the legislative subcommittee of council can provide some input on those various bills and activities. We also highlight what are the key areas of focus for the city at that point in time as well, that we would like to, uh, see some changes occur. But again, the whole focus is related to what is happening in Sacramento, recognizing that we are one of, uh, 485 cities, 58, um, counties and, you know, roughly 40 million people that are offering input into the state legislative process. But that's the intent, um, overall and how the process generally works.
So what we're really doing every year is working with our, our lobbyists that we've hired to define the broad areas of concern that we want to be sure that we weigh in on. Environmental, community services, library hours, parks, water, drought, sustainability, climate action, policing. And in this case was mentioned, um, that we were, wanted to be supportive when legislation came forward for additional funding for police officers, um, training. Correct?
Yeah. Part of that was, is really a funding issue. So the training is still required and occurring, but the state funding hasn't been keeping pace, which means that cities have to fund that at their own dime as opposed to receiving a higher proportion from the state as was originally intended. So it's not that the training's gone down. In fact, the training requirements generally increase over time considerably in many different areas, but, uh, the funding has not kept pace. So that's really, as I recall with that item as well.
So we have been advocating through our lobbyists for additional training for police officers and advocating with our legislate, with Sacramento and the legislature.
Yeah, I believe so. Yeah, I believe so.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Anybody else want to clear anything up? Thank you. We have closed the public comments section. It is a, if people are thinking they want to break, it would be a good idea to take it now, and then we can come back and finish up the rest of the meeting. Does anybody at the council level want a break? Or in the staff? I think we're forging on. All right. So, the next item on the agenda is the adoption of the fiscal year 2021 budget and master fee schedule.
It's mayor, council member, and staff reports.
Okay. I turned the page too fast. So, city attorney, do you have any reports?
Madam Mayor, there were no reportable actions from closed sessions.
Thank you. City manager, do you have anything to add?
Yes, I do this evening, Mayor. Thank you. You know, we do not have a formal COVID-19 update this evening, but I do want to provide an informal one at this moment. As hopefully everybody is aware, through multiple media sources and other outlets, there has been a considerable uptick in cases around the country, in California, in the Bay Area, and here in Walnut Creek. And last week, on July 1st, an additional phase of reopening of society was intended to occur that would have included indoor dining, gyms and fitness centers, le, indoor leisure such as arcades, billboards, bowling alleys, billiards rather, not billboards, indoor museums, and hotels for tourism. And all of that was put on hold because of the uptick in cases. And so I do want to emphasize that it is absolutely imperative for members of our community to comply with the requirements from the health agency, from the health department. Please wear a mask, and please practice social distancing. And I do want to offer up one of the incentives for the need to do so. As many folks are aware, we have been working diligently through the rebound program to allow restaurants and other businesses to operate in the sidewalk areas and in the right-of-way in the streets so that they can spread out in, because they can't operate indoors, but have more space outdoors to at least have an operation, hopefully keep those businesses operating, and obviously allow people an opportunity to get out. Want to share that we, apparently, we were too successful about 10 days ago, and that there were a large number of peoples down, people downtown. Unfortunately, many of our businesses were not diligent in enforcing the rules, and we are now on the watch list for the state of California, which means that we could be shut down for any of these activities at any point in time. My mind, that would be an absolute travesty. So I cannot implore everybody enough. We do not want to be heavy-handed and start shutting businesses down, but we will if it's going to put the reopening of the entire city at risk. So please, wear a mask. Again, please socially distance, particularly when you're in public spaces that are outdoors and are being actively monitored to ensure compliance. So please do so first and foremost, keep people healthy and safe, and secondly, to allow for the gradual reopening of our communities. That's it for me, Mayor.
Hey, that's quite a bit. Let's start with council member Woodell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Buckshai, for making that important message, especially as we see the number of cases increase, not here, only here in Walnut Creek, but also in surrounding communities. It's very important that everyone masks up and ensures that we cut off the spread of this as quickly as possible. I've, you know, since my last update, I attended an A-BAG meeting where we approved the yearly budget for A-BAG. I also had the tech committee for MCE, where we reviewed how we can promote through incentives to the installation of battery storage facilities, both at commercial and residential properties in order to offload peak rate power utilization. It will save all of us money in the long term for, if we can get more battery storage out there. We also, once again, which is also important to the community, declined to accept the nuclear allocations, which is something that MCE is very proud of. We do, if you look at our, of how we get our power in, in this community, nuclear, at least as of early MCE, is, is zero, and that's something that all of us should be proud of, both in, both in the past and moving forward. Lastly, Mr. Wilk and I attended the rally for Miles Hall that attended, that, that occurred in, in Civic Park. There's a lot of good speakers that got up to give their perspectives on their interactions with police, and a lot of touching stories about the outcomes that none of us would, would hope that would, would come out of their interactions with the police department, not only here in Walnut Creek, but also elsewhere. I would encourage everyone to look forward, for, look towards those in the future and come down and, and listen to the stories. They're, they're truly heart, heartwarming. They're heart-touching, or whatever the phrase is. I'll yield my time.
Okay. Council member Francois.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had a few updates in terms of a, more of a public service announcement first. As many of the residents know, Caltrans is busy working on the I-680 Express Lane project, which would add an express lane from the Venetia Bridge down to Rudyard Road. And as a result of that, there'll be a closure of the South Main Street on-ramp to southbound 680. I believe it's closed now, and it will remain closed until July 20th. So your detour option is Rudyard. Switching to council assignments, I serve as a liaison to the DRAA. I attended their meeting via Zoom on June 22nd. I'm pleased to report that the Plaza area in front of the leisure is on track and scheduled to open in mid-August, so that will really provide a fourth stage and an extra gathering space for the community, and an opportunity for us to celebrate the arts in COVID times, virtually if we need to, or socially distanced. So I'm excited about that. In the meantime, the board is working very diligently and hard on transforming the leisure, which, which may not reopen now until January at the earliest, transforming that into a virtual center for the arts, and putting a lot of thought and care into having a virtual, a virtual speaker series focused on very topical items. They mentioned the Center for Comparative Studies in Race and Diversity at Stanford, having a speaker from there, looking at Michael Fisher, the award-winning author, to speak on economic issues, and also reaching out to various county and city health officials on how to respond to the COVID crisis. We're looking into that, as well as virtual performances. For jazz was mentioned, as well as maybe high school or college performances. So I'm excited that they're so excited and doing all the great work they're doing to keep the leisure alive and vibrant and relevant and meaningful, even though its, its doors aren't physically open. And to the extent you don't think that a virtual presentation can have impact or meaning, I would encourage you all to watch the Hamilton performance, which my family and I did over the weekend on Disney Plus, and was really remarkable. Then, my final update is I serve on the Housing and Community Development Committee along with the mayor, and we received an update from staff on additional funding we got from the federal government through the CARES Act. And this, these are some pictures here of, and thank you, City Court, for putting those up, of the great work that our, Kat Risinger, our, our recreation manager, and her team are doing as part of the senior care support team. So these federal funds are going to go so that we can continue programs like this. And what these group of volunteers and some of our officers are shown there are doing are delivering meals, they're delivering art packets, they're doing welfare checks on seniors, making weekly calls to them, being a lifeline, bringing them medications and, and seeing to their needs. And the, the response to this has been very heartwarming in terms of some of the quote, quotes, and I won't read them here, but it'd be nice if we can get them on our website because the feedback is really tremendous that, that we're getting to this program. I just want to commend staff for doing this, and as the mayor says, Walnut Creek works together, and I think this is a good, a really good example of that. Some of the other federal, in addition to this great program, some of the other federal funds are going to help people that are food-challenged, or that they're at risk of losing their homes during this time. So those funds are going to go to groups like Shelter Inc., St. Vincent de Paul, the Monument Crisis Center, and Meals on Wheels. And that is the end of my report.
Council member Silva.
Thank you very much, Mayor. On July 1st, I attended the Homeless Task Force. It's a community group that involves both the city, the consortium that, from the county that does the core team services with the homeless, Trinity Center, Loaves and Fishes, and our police department. And there was a discussion of tiny homes and a project both in Livermore and in Hayward, where these very tiny homes have been built and erected on church parking lots for the homeless. And so it's an interesting option and alternative, and they're pursuing that through their housing committee. I also had an opportunity to really experience how collaborative we all are between the Trinity Center, which is the nonprofit in our community that serves as the navigation center and provides homelessness services, as well as the county, which we helped to fund for the core team that provides services to the homelessness, homeless, as well as the city and the police department. I also had an opportunity to have a discussion with the former executive director and asked her about the importance of our police outreach team that focuses on homelessness, and she said it was invaluable. It's really a reflection of the police department becoming more community policing-focused, and they've embraced it, and they couldn't do the work that they're doing without that team. So I wanted to pass that on to the rest of my colleagues. The, I am an officer and member of the statewide board of the League of California Cities, and at our June 19th board meeting, we did take action on a number of bills, what we're lobbying on, but we also discussed and then took votes to take positions on three pending measures that are slated for the November ballot. We, as a board for the league, we took a position to support the Family Home Protection and Fairness Act, which is sponsored by the California Realtors, and it's basically a tax portability, property tax portability measure for those who are 55 years of age or over. It's portability between counties. We took a position of support, and we voted and took, to take no position on two other measures. That's neither a yes nor a no, one of which is the Split Roll Initiative, and the other is the Rental Control Initiative that will be slated for the November ballot. As I think we all know, the state adopted its budget for the coming year. There was a $54 billion gap that had to be closed, and they did it. They let just, the Assembly and Senate and let, and the governor collaborated. It is basically provisional because it is dependent on about $14 billion of funding from the federal government. And there is a list of cuts that will occur if, in fact, the state does not get that funding. So they're calling it provisional, and they'll be revisited and revised in August. Of importance to us is that the budget included $500 million that is funding that the state received from the federal government as part of the CARES Act that will be allocated to cities based on a population basis. These are all the cities. There are probably 476 of us did not receive direct funding from the federal government in the CARES Act. The six cities that did will not be receiving this funding. I think the city manager mentioned that we're eligible for up to about $800,000 of this funding from the state, and it is to be used for homeless, public health, public safety, and other programs that serve to combat COVID-19. So we're really going to hear more next week on how that can be applied to things that it's not just for PPE, but it can also be used for services that are protecting our community and those who are needing of services, whether it's seniors or the homeless. And so I think that's really important to look forward to hearing more about that. I also, at that same board meeting with the league, saw a one-hour presentation from the National League of City, Cities, on a program and initiative that they've had for about six or seven years called Race Equity and Leadership. It was built in response to the shooting in Ferguson, Missouri. And it is a toolkit, kit of resources. So Kevin and Matt and staff, I hope you will look at the resources that are out on its website because it's a package, and they haven't done a lot of work in California yet, but the state league is looking to bring them into California to help, so that may be something we can tap into. I would make note of a couple of pieces of legislation that I think the community might be interested in. One is Assembly Bill 1506. It's about police use of force, and it would, if adopted and signed by the government, it would establish a function within the Department of Justice whereby we could refer police use of force cases to the AG, refer the review. Currently, the AG has no functionality to do that. So, and I understand the Police Chief Association is very supportive of this bill. And another bill that the Police Chief Association is supportive of is Assembly Bill 1196, which is a statewide ban on corroded artery restraints. Now, I know we have, our chief has banned it, and many communities have, but it's good when you get a consistent set of rules at the statewide level. I will remind everyone that the census is still underway because of the COVID-19. People are still responding. 76.3% of our households have responded, but if you are in the audience or listening tonight and your household has not yet responded, I encourage you to go to www.2020census.gov and complete the 10 questions. It's very easy. My husband and I did it many months ago, and it took about six minutes, and I was really disappointed that they didn't ask any more questions about us. And then I would finally like to thank the city manager and all of the city staff for the work they did last week with the community of businesses downtown and really trying to reset the table on how those businesses operated so that they could maintain the social distancing requirements and really create a safer and healthier environment for the community to be able to come together and enjoy our downtown. So thank you to all of staff, and... Somebody else's turn.
It's Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just wanted to, the comment I was going to make, and I, I think I'll elaborate a little bit on it, because people had spoken in the last public comments about how we don't do, we're not listening, and we're not doing anything until suddenly two weeks later, they're speaking again. And so there's a couple, actually, a couple of things that happened over these last couple of weeks that were directly related to conversations that we had within the city council. One of them was talking about the cahoots model, and there has been several different pieces of communication back and forth. I also saw something on the Today Show last week about this and sent this to staff to take a look at, and there's already conversations that are happening between some of our departments and, and places like Eugene, Oregon, that's using the cahoots model. So this is all happening in the background, even though people may not be seeing daily updates on what's been happening within the city council. The other is that the city sent a letter to the county supervisors in support of our residents who have asked for a change in response to how we've been dealing with mental health crisis issues when police have responded. I've also, I've asked, as, as other council members have asked, that we find these better options and that we need to have unarmed response options when someone calls and there's a mental health crisis that's occurring and help is needed. As written and signed by the mayor, Luelahaskew, and I apologize for unsealing your thunder here, Mayor, but I wanted to make sure this was mentioned. The city of Walnut Creek is encouraged by the county's mobile crisis response team, the model, and want to explore options to expand the reach and impact of this and other similar programs. We are asking the county to take the lead on a coordinated approach that may include other nearby cities as they are best equipped to do so. Doing this may help provide a path for a model that we've seen in other communities like Oregon, which will hopefully bring about a vastly different outcome than the tragedy that occurred when Miles Hall had a mental health crisis in the Hall's own neighborhood. We need to ensure that the county takes this as a priority, and will follow up on our request to begin the discussion as soon as possible, and using Walnut Creek as part of the pilot program as soon as the program is in place. And this is something that I was encouraged not just to see us send this as, as we had directed staff to do, and they followed up on within the next day, but we also received information back from the county supervisors that this will be brought up at the next mayor's conference, which is on Thursday, and then there'll be a follow-up meeting in September, including the county supervisors and mayors in our area. And we, we received an email back from FOSAF that had seen this as well, and all of this just goes to show that things are happening in the background between meetings that not everybody may have that insight into. Pleased that we're able to continue to do this. I look at this as a I look at this as a priority specifically in working with the county, and will make sure that we continue to keep our pedal to the metal on this. Thank you. You're on mute.
I'm muting so I don't... Since we're doing TV reviews, last night and tonight, the PBS is doing how the women's vote came about, and this is the 100th year of women's suffrage. It doesn't even seem possible that it has only been 100 years since that. And one of the things that I noted while I was watching it is how closely related women's suffrage is with a common bond with the people of color who, we were suffering kind of the same, the same things. And women's votes encouraged more people of color to get involved in the issue as well. I want to point out that 511 Contra Costa, whose website, website is 511contracosta.org, is doing our summer bicycle challenge. And I encourage you to go on their website, yet again, 511contracosta.org/sbc, which is Summer Bike Challenge. The Walnut Creek won. Each city has their own challenge, and Walnut Creek is the red button. And it gives you a chance to get out and get on your bicycle and win some prizes maybe, and have a good time. Not long after the excitement happened for the earlier issues with the looting and June 1st thing, the city manager, Captain Hill, and I met via Zoom with the Interfaith Council, and we heard additional information from a different, slightly different point of view. And we got to share some of our insights, and I think it was a valuable time spent for all. At Contra Costa Transportation Authority, like everything else, they're largely dependent on sales tax, and as of the COVID crisis, have had to rearrange a lot of what they're doing. There is, and I was hoping to have the website, there is an interactive idea where you can go and report what's important to you on the Innovate 680. I promise that I will have it available by our next council meeting because we will still be soliciting that information. Not long after that meeting, at 10 o'clock in the evening, about 200 people or more decided to visit our front yard and terrify our neighbors and express their right for peaceful demonstration. There was trespass on our property. There was vandalism. That's cost us a pretty dear penny to fix. But the answer, and what I have said consistently, is as terrifying as this might have been for our neighbors and for us, as expensive as it is, it is small price to pay if it gets us closer to getting us where our community and our country and our people need to be. Black Lives Matter. I have been a proponent of social justice and racial equality pretty much for my entire life. And so if that's what's asked of me to prove the point, I am happy to make it. At the League of Cities meeting, we heard about how the new housing allocations are, and they're breathtaking in terms of quantity of houses that they expect us to be able to supply. But there is a little bit of improvement about how they're balancing the numbers. Finally, the group that is responsible for telling us how to allocate housing has finally heard that you have to have the jobs near the housing. All of Contra Costa County and the outskirts can't absorb all the housing. It's just going to clog our freeways and be very expensive. I attended the CCTA Planning Committee, and we referred the state-level diversity report on that level to our committee. Councilmember Francois reminded me that during the HCD meeting, we also allocated some funds to the Trinity Safe Parking Program, which is designed and is more busy than it is in the wintertime because people who could take shelter in the winter shelter have gone back to living in their cars, and this is a place where they can go and be safe. The project rebound with, that I served with, Councilmember Silva, met with managers of shopping centers and strip malls, as many as we could convince would come and talk to us anyhow, to see if there were ways that the city could help them, help their tenants adapt to the new normal of COVID-19. And on this, on deck for this week, I have an Innovate 680 Policy Advisory Committee, Transpac, and the mayor's conference, where I will report on our letter to the county and where I will ask the mayor's conference members to think deeply about joining us in our leadership in helping to get 24/7 mental health emergency services available for our community. I think I'm done, and now I'm going to run it by council. Do we need a 10-minute break? I believe we do. See you back at 8:05.
Mayor, do you want 15 seconds?
I want 15 seconds, thank you.
Okay, 15 seconds.
Welcome back to the July 7th Reviewer Meeting of the Walnut Creek City Council. The next item on the agenda is the adoption of the fiscal year 2021 budget and master fee schedule. At this time, I will turn the meeting over to the staff to make their report.
Go ahead. Sorry, apologies. I get my camera turned on in time here. So I just wanted to kick things off briefly before Administrative Services Director Kirsten LaCass jumps into the detailed presentation. This is intended to be our final update on the proposed budget for fiscal year 21. As your council is aware, normally, we would have this budget adopted before June 30th. The reason we don't is because of the issues related to coronavirus and then social unrest that occurred. We diverted our attention from the budget for a while in order to focus on more urgent matters, came back to address this. As will be noted in the presentation, your council, as well as the Finance Committee, have received numerous updates in iterations on both the fiscal year 20 and now the 21-year budget. So today is intended to be a recap of those prior discussions, and we are asking your council to consider adopting the entire budget, not just the general fund or parking or Boundary Oak that has been the focus in the past, but for all funds that are part of the city budget. So with that, Kirsten, please run through the details. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Good evening, Mayor Haskew and members of the City Council. Kirsten LaCass, Administrative Services Manager, Director. So as Dan mentioned, tonight, we're going to walk through the fiscal year 21 proposed budget and focusing in more detail those areas that have significant changes. So tonight, what we are asking of you is to adopt the proposed fiscal year 2021 operating budget, capital budget, and master fee schedule. We'll walk through the timeline and next steps, and then discuss the fiscal year 2021 proposed budget, and then go through some of the more significant changes within that budget. The full timeline for the fiscal year 21 budget process is detailed in Attachment 5 to the Agenda Report. Our timeline here picks up on June 30th, which was our first introduction of the proposed budget. Tonight, we'll recap the general fund and capital budget and discuss the operating funds of the city, the other operating funds of the city. And in the event the budget is not adopted this evening, there will be a special meeting scheduled for July 10th. And then we will come back in the fall if there are any additional adjustments we need to make based on additional information as it's available. So for our fiscal year 2021 proposed budget, the all-funds budget is 123.3 million, and it's made up of the general fund of 79.3 million, the capital budget of 76.7.6 million, and all other funds of 36.4 million. And the all-other funds category, as Dan mentioned, is all the other operating funds of the city, and it does include things like the parking fund and Boundary Oak Golf Course, as well as our internal service funds, to name a few. So the general fund revenues are proposed at 77 million with expenses of 79.3 million and the proposed use of reserves of 2.3 million, which results in a balanced budget of 79.3 million. The other funds category has revenues proposed of 29 million with expenses of 36.4 million and the authorized use of fund balance of 7.4 million. If I can just clarify, the authorized use of fund balance represents funding that's been set aside in prior years for specific purposes, like multi-year projects and things like equipment replacement. So just as a quick example, in a case of multi-year projects, not all of the funding is spent in the first year, so we carry that over to subsequent fiscal years. And then for our internal service funds, another example, we are charging our user departments for services, and those can include things like replacement of equipment and vehicles. And so we accumulate those balances and then spend them when we have sufficient accumulation. And so that would provide us with an operating budget balanced at 115.7 million. So for our proposed capital budget, this slide provides a summary by funding source, and the total amount allocated for asset management is 4.93 million and 2.7 million for discretionary projects totaling 7.63 million. And the details on these projects and this budget can be found in Attachments 12 and 13 of the staff report. So when we started looking at balancing the budget, the general fund budget, we had projected revenues of 76.6 million and expenses of 88.7 million, which resulted in the $12.1 million deficit, and that's what we are calling our fiscal year 21 base budget. Since then, we have proposed adjustments totaling that $12.1 million by identifying revenue increases of 375,000, expense reductions of 9.08 million, suspension of reserve contributions of approximately 320,000, and lastly, the use of reserves of 2.33 million. Based on this, the fiscal year 21 general fund budget is balanced at 79.3 million. And next, we're going to be talking about a little more detail on the general fund's significant changes. So I'd like to pause here and see if there are any questions at this point.
I'm not seeing any, so please carry on.
Next, we will talk about those significant changes that we have covered before, but we will recap what we have. So as you've seen before, we've identified 12.1 million of balancing measures, and it's a combination of expense reductions, new revenues, and the use of reserves. We walked through this table in detail last week and noted the reductions by department, which totaled 9.2 million, which includes a reduction in contribution to the city's capital budget of 500,000. And the total FTE reductions is 19.25. Again, this is just the general fund. So our significant revenue adjustments, as you recall, we're proposing revenue adjustments that will provide a total increase to the general fund of approximately 375,000. And this comes from the increased arts and recreation fees, early repayment of the Boundary Oak Golf Course loan, and then reduced 100,000 in rental revenue from the restructured lease agreement. Just to go over a few of our significant expenditure adjustments, we increased our expenditures by 600,000 as part of this budget, 400,000 for training, community building, and listening sessions on topics of implicit bias, diversity and inclusion, and human trafficking. Additionally, we increased the budget 100,000 for mental health response training in the police department. And then last week, we received direction from council to allocate 100,000 towards the mobile crisis response team services provided by Contra Costa County. And next, we're going to be talking about the proposed other funds' significant changes. This slide shows the proposed budget for the non-general fund funds. And the first item is special revenue funds totaling 17.4 million. And this category of funds includes funds whose revenue sources are restricted for a specific purpose by an external source. So an example of that would be a grant, our clean water fund, our state gas tax, and any local measures. Then the enterprise funds total 12.4 million, and that includes parking and Boundary Oak Golf Course. As I mentioned earlier, our internal service funds are funds that provide services to user departments within this city, and that includes things like facility maintenance and vehicle maintenance and replacement, and that total is 6.3 million. And in our category of other funds, that's essentially the trust and agency funds, which is money the city holds on behalf of another entity like the Leshaw Foundation, and that total is 300,000. So the combined total is 36.4 million for our other funds. And Attachment 11 to the staff report provides detail of each of these funds, the funds within each of these groups. So additional significant changes, we've talked a lot about Boundary Oak Golf Course and downtown parking enterprise and enhancement fund as separate reports. So we're combining all that this evening. As you recall, when we talked about Boundary Oak, they're providing limited services, but as a result of that, there's additional revenue. So there's no need to use any operating reserves, and so this fund is essentially balanced. For our parking fund, the charging for certain areas will begin on July 1st, or did begin on July 1st based on the phased-in approach that was approved by council. There's no use of operating reserves to balance, and in fact, the budget includes contributions to reserves. Additionally, we've created three new funds. The state and asset forfeiture funds account for proceeds of investigations for criminal offenses, and these are restricted. And so these two actually are part of the category of special revenue funds. So while we have accounted for these appropriately in the general fund, tracking will be much cleaner if we move those to their own special funds. Additionally, the Certified Access Specialist Training Program Fund was created, and these are fees that are charged along with business licenses, and they're restricted for training and certification for access specialists. And next, we're going to be talking about the significant personnel changes, and I'd like to pause and see if there are any questions at this point.
You must be doing a great job, Kirsten.
Okay. So as I've mentioned, we are eliminating 19.25 FTE in the general fund, which impacts 28 positions and 27 employees. Of that total, 6.5 FTE result from positions that are reduced to less than one FTE and 5.5 FTE a result from the closure of the Leshaw Center due to the shelter in place. Additionally, we have the expiration of one limited-duration FTE in Information Systems Internal Service Fund, and that was a project-based position and was intended to expire on June 30th of 2020. Our total reduction citywide of all funds is 20.25 FTE. So the citywide, our total proposed positions as of fiscal year 20, we were authorized at 378. 368 FTE are regular positions, and there were 10 limited-duration positions. As a result of the budget balancing, we are now reducing 16.75 FTE of regular positions and 3.5 limited durations for the total of 20.25. So the proposed fiscal year 21 full-time equivalent count will be 357.75. So again, what we're asking of you this evening is to adopt the proposed fiscal year 2021 operating budget, capital budget, and master fee schedule. And that concludes the presentation, and we have staff available for any questions.
Okay, I'm sure that one of us or two of us have some questions. So I will take a moment and let... I can't see the entire council. Let me see if I can move this. Nope. Yes, I can. I can now see the entire council. So if there is anyone who has any questions, I would like to see their... Yeah, Councilmember Silva.
I know others have questions as well. Kirsten, thank you for the presentation, and Dan as well. And I know a lot of people were involved in this budget. And I know it's been a difficult budget to put together and really unfortunate times. So I just want to acknowledge that before we get started this evening. I appreciated in the budget that you mentioned that the additional $100,000 that we earmarked at the mayor's request last week for the mobile crisis response. I'm sure it could be more money in the future, but at least it's a placeholder, and hopefully will encourage the other cities in the county to join us in this effort with Contra Costa County. Where in the budget is that? Has that number been placed?
It has been placed in general government.
So general government went up by 600,000. What's the offset that suddenly we need? What's the change that made it still balance? Because it was $100,000 more in expenses, and you know, did we... I won't make...
The offset was 100,000 additional in reserves. So essentially, we used funding, other funding that we would have provided for other things is now being used for the mobile crisis response, and then we backfilled that with the reserves.
Right. And this might be better answered by Dan. If we were to decide after, it's going to take a while to get a coalition going and figure out the right mix of solution. It's not something that will be done overnight. The county, for one thing, the county is also facing its own budget challenges. What is... How long will it be, do you think, before we really understand? Is it going to be six to nine months, do you think, before we get a sense of how much our funding for this might have to be as we look at it?
Yeah, I think it's going to be a little while. You know, we heard back from the county from the letter that the mayor sent that it would be two months from now that they would be interested in participating in a meeting with several of the cities. So I don't see candidly much occurring prior to that, because that's really a starting point in order to dig into this. Obviously, we will at a staff level prior to then obtain as much information from the county as we can, but they're planning a formal presentation at that point. And then I think we have to dig in in some detail and obviously coordinate. So yeah, I think it's several months from now before we would see anything substantively. You know, I just want to impress upon people that these types of efforts take time. We're talking about potentially 20 different entities with their own elected bodies, their own sets of challenges and priorities and circumstances and with various needs. And so it's about really trying to align all of those around a common program here in order to move something forward, at least a subset of those 20 entities, if you will, in order to move something forward. So it's going to take a little time. Candidly, I was very, and I think we all were, relieved to see the county did respond fairly quickly. And part of the challenge and fairness to them is many of the folks in their health agency and department that are involved in these programs are also dealing with COVID-19 very happily. So that's likely part of the reason, but defer to the county for more details in that. But yes, several months.
Now, I don't know how long it took us, but about four years ago, we dedicated money toward homeless services, and we helped, we worked with Concord and created a partnership with Concord to help fund additional hours in Concord and Walnut Creek for homeless outreach in their core team. Is that potentially a model for collaboration that we'd be able to follow here?
Yeah, potentially, and that's actually something some of the other city managers and I have discussed that that could be that type of a template, if you will. I think a little bit of a difference is that that core program that offers those services through the county that we partnered with was much, I think anyway, more established than what the mobile crisis response team is, and others had more experience in dealing with that dynamic than what we're talking about here. So I think there's a little more of a lift to do here than there was for that homeless program.
Thank you. As long as I have you. My next question has to do with the library hours. I know we said last week what we wanted to do was work with the county in the fall to start figuring out how we can fund additional library hours in the second half of the fiscal year. Those monies are not yet set aside in this budget, but what do you suggest we do in order to solidify our intent?
Yeah, so just to recognize what you stated, that yes, the direction previously was to follow up with the Library Foundation and with the county library system based upon the foundation coming up with a little over $100,000 to help support some additional hours. And I believe there was interest in all the council members wanting to try to work something out so that beginning in January, there could be some expanded hours beyond the base 35, recognizing that right now, the libraries are not open anyway and likely will be not opening for some time, at least to the level of providing service that most would be accustomed to. There's a drop-off and pickup curbside service, but that's effectively it. And with the setback due to the rise in COVID cases, it's unlikely they're going to open anytime soon. We don't have an estimate at this point in time. On the upside as well was the county's willingness to be a little more flexible in terms of the timing to make some modification hours as compared to what they stated previously. So I think, you know, depends what your council would want to do, but one option would be to make it clear that as part of the record this evening, that that is direction. If you wanted to formalize into motion, that we have that to follow up discussion with the county and with the Library Foundation and bring back options to the council this fall or, you know, when the appropriate time is, in order to identify what the options are, what the costs would be, and how they could be paid for.
Take note. Hopefully, we get a motion in this calendar day and not tomorrow. My next question, I'm going to be cautiously optimistic. It's only 8:30. One of the things that we've heard over the last few weeks is really, why is Arts and Recreation being cut so much? And I think I know the answer. A lot of it has to do with the Leshaw Center having to be closed, but perhaps you can explain it, and we'll have a little chat about that further, and maybe, Dan, it's you.
Yeah, let me hit on it generally, and then if you have more specific questions, defer to Kirsten for more detail. But it's really important to differentiate the types of impacts on the city budget. So we know that we're dealing with general economic challenges because of COVID, but we're also dealing with very specific challenges with respect to what services we can provide. So many of the programs that we provide in person that are offered by Arts and Recreation, the Leshaw Center likely being the best example, we're not legally allowed to operate. We're not legally allowed to operate right now because of the shelter in place and the social distancing requirements. And of the programs that we are legally allowed to offer, we have to do so in a socially distant compliant manner. Meaning they're operating in a much lower capacity in terms of the number of people that we can serve. Which means there's less revenues and in many cases, less need for staffing to support those programs because of such a lower capacity. In the case of the Leisure Center, we cannot even open it right now per the current county health orders. So there are no programs to provide at least in person in the Leisure Center. So those programs are impacted as a direct result of the county health order. We also then have budgetary shortfalls because of the general economic impact that it resulted in a drop of sales tax. Transient occupancy tax are the big two that have largely impacted budget. And those revenues are used to provide numerous types of city services. And many of those, we just don't have the funding. So we have reductions in various areas of the city budget that are related to that general reduction in funding, even though the demand may be there. And that's why there are service level impacts in terms of being able to do less. Whereas, as I mentioned, the programs related, Arts and Recreation are a direct result to the shelter in place. So those are really the two different dynamics that are driving the budgetary actions. And as a result of the drop in use of Arts and Recreation programs, we are looking at a $6 million revenue shortfall just in that department. Because of the county health orders and what we are not able to provide in services. Why there is such a large expenditure reduction there? Because even if we wanted to add the expenditures back, in many cases, we couldn't spend it because we can't provide the programs.
So it's not dissimilar to a local restaurant that can do outdoor dining but not indoor dining. Their capacity and ability to deliver service to the broader customer base is hindered.
Correct.
Restricted. Okay. Another question we've been receiving is why, and I think it's some confusion about why we aren't as a council debating. Layoffs versus furloughs versus pay cuts and other alternatives, early retirement. And maybe. We can have a little back and forth here about that so we get some clarification because it is confusing. And it's, I think it's about the law and labor negotiations, et cetera.
Yeah, so there's a lot of layers to this. There's California law that is very prescriptive when it comes to labor law. We also have our personnel rules that we're required to follow. And we also have memorandums, memorandums of understanding or MOUs with each of our employee associations or our unions that dictate how a lot of this happens. So what's within your council's purview is determining which positions ultimately by job classification would be eliminated. And obviously, there are many that are proposed this evening, unfortunately. But beyond that, those other rules and procedures dictate ultimately who is impacted. And in many cases, that's driven by seniority. And candidly, we don't fully know the ripple effect right now. So there's a couple issues at play. The city had offered an early retirement incentive. And it appears that in the neighborhood of 15 individuals are interested in pursuing that. Depending who retires or who doesn't, because there's a revocation period of up to 45 days. We won't ultimately know until about the end of August, who is absolutely going to retire with that program or not. And if some of those folks do retire, it may reduce the need to eliminate other positions or potentially lay people off. So there's a ripple effect there that won't fully be known for a while. In addition, that then drives some of the seniority calculations that occur. So that's what's happening on the layoff side and. How it's determined who is impacted. With respect to furloughs, we do not, that is a meet and confer discussion with each of the unions. We do not have the ability to state that we want to furlough. That has to be discussed. And recently, just did receive an update, there was a proposal from the city. That a number of the Arts and Recreation employees who can't work currently because of shelter in place orders, but could likely work in a few months from now. When hopefully things improve and we can start opening back up, that they would be furloughed instead of being laid off. But unfortunately, the employees' union voted to not support that. And instead said that they would rather pursue the layoffs. So that is what we will be bound to do going forward, barring any other direction from the employee union.
So to say this a different way, not that you didn't say it accurately, you did. We have, we are faced with, we must adopt a balanced budget because the budget gives the city spending authority. And part of that budget balancing requires some changes in personnel levels to the effect of $2 million. And it could be layoffs, it could be done with furloughs, it could be done with early retirements, it could be done with pay reductions. But the city council only has the authority to actually deal with layoffs. And so that's our worst case scenario in case there is no collective agreement. On the how the early retirements and furloughs and potential pay reductions might occur.
Yeah, that's correct. And I do want to emphasize that we are not. Laying people off or eliminating filled positions. There are a number of vacant positions that will be held vacant as well. So it's not all just filled positions and your council does have authority to, you know, direct that those positions be held vacant as well.
No matter what we might want to do or prefer to see, this is this is where we are in order to get in. I think, Mayor, those are my questions. Thank you, Dan.
Okay, I believe that I thought I saw a hand from. Yes, I did. Oh, no, I thought I saw a hand from Matt Francois. Did you decide not to ask the question?
Councilmember Silva was so thorough in her question, she addressed the issues that I had.
She does that all the time. Mayor Protem, would you like some questions, please?
I do. I actually came up with a few others that Councilmember Silva didn't have, but she did actually cover a few of mine. So I just, you know, at the, at the risk of repeating a little bit of what just happened. Obviously, at last week's city council meeting regarding the budget, one employee's name, artistic director Michael Butler, came up multiple times during public comments. So just to, just to be crystal clear here, Dan Buckshai. Is the city council able to provide input on hiring, firing, laying off, retaining, or furloughing any specific employee or employees?
Your council has discretion to decide which specific positions by job classification, by job description, if you will. Would remain, be added, be changed, or be eliminated. But you don't have the direct authority to dictate which individuals, which individual people would stay or go. And as I mentioned previously, we do not have the authority to unilaterally decide if folks should be furloughed instead of laid off.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, I've got a couple of questions for some of the department heads. So for Public Works, and I'm not sure if this would be, I believe Heather Ballinger is out, but perhaps Kirsten, you're able to handle this, or maybe Katie can. But I'd like to ask about school crossing guards. We got a number of letters regarding school crossing guards. And of course, you know, any of us that have had kids in the schools, it's nice to have school crossing guards to help to cross that street. What's the total funding for the last fiscal year as it relates specifically to school crossing guards?
So that amount is approximately 130,000.
Okay, and so if we reduce that, the proposal here is to reduce that by 14% in the staff report. In dollars, what specifically would that be?
Eighteen thousand, one hundred and seventy-six dollars would be the reduction amount.
Across how many schools?
It would be distributed across all the currently supported school sites of which there are seven. There's four in the Mount Diablo Unified School District and three in the Walnut Creek School District.
Okay, okay, obviously, the Walnut Creek Schools and the Mount Diablo School District. Does the, so does this fund the entire crossing guards? Not not the fund that, not the portions being cut, but the fund of the $130,000 approximately from last year. Does that fund the entire crossing guards or does the district also pay a portion?
It just, the Walnut Creek School District pays 50% and the city was providing 50%. And then the parent faculty clubs in the Mount Diablo Unified School District were providing the 50% for those schools. The additional 50. So it is split.
I understand, okay. And I'm not sure of the rules of this with schools. I'm not sure anybody actually here in the panelists are. But is it possible for schools to also ask parents to volunteer at times? Is that allowed?
That is not something that. I know if if that's possible or not. I don't know, Katie, you.
I, I know. So I don't know if laws have changed. I know that when my kids went to Walnut Acres, there had been calls that went out from time to time about parents volunteering to help. Crossing guard duty on a Monday or a Tuesday or whatever, and there was a whole list of different parents that could do that. I just wasn't sure if that was still the case. Okay, that's that's helpful. Thank you. So this question is specifically regarding like the libraries. And we received a letter from the Library Foundation. And they, of course, we got that about a week ago where they submitted a letter offering to pay for about $110,000 for funding. Seventeen library hours from January to June of 2021. Can that be brought for discussion at a future date on the agenda even after this budget is approved?
Yes, that can.
So at council direction, we can do that?
Yes.
Okay, great. That's that's good. So I think I'd like to bring up Chief Chaplin on a couple of questions regarding the police. A minute here. There he is. Good evening, Chief Chaplin.
Evening.
So a couple of questions here. We talked, I talked a little bit about cahoots in my earlier comments. Have you been able to look into how ideally, I'm not looking for specifics, but into how ideally a program like cahoots or a county-led. Mobile health crisis program would work logistically?
Well, thank you for the question. For the record, Thomas Chaplin proudly serving as your police chief. And in response to Councilmember Waddell's question at our last council meeting. Regarding the types of calls that might fall into this category. And in examining this topic further, I have pulled together a small team in our police department. That consists of our crime analyst, our dispatch supervisor, our professional staff manager, and our records lead. To take a look at what calls that we have received in this past year might qualify. For a non-police response. So we have begun the research into those types of calls. We are also closely monitoring several programs that are. Seem to be consistent with the approach that has been asked for and that we're examining. That includes the cahoots model out of Eugene. It also includes the crisis response unit out of Olympia, Washington, which is a city more similar to our size. We're also looking at the newly created Denver STAR model. And the Portland Street Response as well as what people in our region, agencies in our region are doing. So for us, it's a matter of taking a look at the calls that might be. Good for a non-police response, whereas we could still be available or called if necessary. So we're working to identify those types of calls. We're working to identify how many there have been and how we are gathering data to ensure we have. The proper information and data to base decisions on. Some of this is a little complex. For example, measuring back this past June 30th, 2019 to July 1st. We've had approximately 300 incidents where somebody was placed on what's known as a 51. Fifty hold or somebody's a danger to themselves or others. But we're also looking at our calls for service that were classified as disturbance. And we found that 46 of those had a mental health component that could have been handled by a non-police response. So what we're trying to do is again, of the 80,000 calls that we receive in that amount of time. And the over 40,000 that are turned into calls for service is getting an example and an idea of how many of those could have been handled. By another entity that would not involve police. It is my intention with this research and with our findings. To create an opportunity for the Public Safety Committee to meet later in July. And discuss these findings and provide a comprehensive overview of the types of calls and the reports. That could potentially be diverted with a non-police response similar to the cahoots model and the others we're examining.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you for that. Along those lines, that we've heard how there are specially trained people on police forces as well. For handling some of the more sensitive calls or ones that might not require an armed response. Is that the case in Walnut Creek?
Well, we do have a mental health evaluation team officer who is specially trained. But he responds not necessarily to calls for service, but really reacts to referrals. That he receives from officers. And again, his jurisdiction is not just in Walnut Creek, but it's in the central county. So he'll work with families to try to connect them to resources, provide some guidance. And some help and not necessarily stemming from a call for service, but really the follow-up that happens after.
Okay, oh, interesting. All right. So is it possible to have some designated officers that can also be trained from the, from within the department? And and even thereby eliminating the need to hire extra people who are already trained? Can we just help to increase our knowledge internally?
Well, thanks for that question, Mayor Protem. That is something that we strive to do already. I have mentioned previously that I have been working with the Martinez chief and the Pleasant Hill chief. To try to create a specially trained cadre of officers that would be available at each department. So that we could lean on one another for support in those instances where a police response. To a person in mental health crisis is required. So the thought being that we would each have a certain number of officers that were trained far beyond what the requirements are. And should Martinez or Pleasant Hill have an event and not have an officer available, we could send somebody. Conversely, they could do the same for us. Those conversations have begun. We also have people that are specially trained in crisis negotiation. Who have in many occasions in the past responded to events where somebody was suicidal. Or threatening harm and been able to deploy those skills and deescalate those situations.
Really glad to hear that. Thank you. The last question I had then relates to some of that advanced skills training. Within the budget that's been proposed by staff, which includes an additional 100,000 for mental health response training. How much of Walnut Creek Police would be able to participate in that type of advanced training?
Well, it would be my hope and desire that a vast majority of our staff could. Please note that we have already been pushing forward and trying to develop more training. In fact, it had been our intention to bring crisis intervention training to our department in June. And unfortunately, in the pandemic, we weren't able to bring the instructors on site. But I can proudly share that we were still able to deliver that training by providing it virtually. The first time in the state, Post had authorized such a class or certified such a class. So it's our hope to continue advancing our training and ensuring we get the most people through the training as possible. I do want to note that when we talk training, it's often not just having or sending every officer off to a class. Many times, we will train people to train the trainers. So we'll send them to advanced training, then they can bring that training back to the department so we can ensure that is delivered to everybody.
Thank you. And so I guess I do actually have one more question. I lied. I'm sorry about that. This can actually be you. If you don't know the answer to this one, I'm pretty sure. know the answer to this one, I'm pretty sure that Dan would. So we've allocated four hundred thousand dollars for training for city staff and implicit bias, diversity, and inclusivity training. Does this also include the police department?
Yes.
Great. Short, brief, a brief answer to that. Terrific. Thank you. That's all I have for right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'm stuck in the same position that Matt was in that there is no question that I came up with that's still left for anybody to 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 even care about. So I guess then that takes us to public comment.
Um, Mayor, I have one more follow-up question for the chief based on Mayor Protem's question.
That will give everybody who wants to get registered for public comment a chance to stick up their little blue hands.
Um, thank you, Chief. And I appreciate that you're looking at these other models inappropriate in cities of our size. And I also would assume in doing so, whether you're looking at the Eugene Springfield Cahoots or Olympia's program or all that, you're also looking at the type of calls they have. And for example, Eugene, Oregon, their point in time count in twenty nineteen for homeless was eighteen hundred. And that is twenty times what Walnut Creek's is. So it would be hard to judge, you know, you can't just divide by a population base and get the right numbers. So is there reason to believe that we would need to abandon what the county has and start over with this regional approach to a mobile crisis team? Or do you think this research will just give us ideas for how to augment and make it better?
Well, you know, we've had representatives from the county out to present on the Mobile Crisis Response Team so that we could better share and amplify that resource to our community and let our officers and dispatchers know about it. So I think in concept, that's a fine program. I will note that when the Mobile Crisis Response Team first goes to a residence, they do ask a law enforcement to accompany them. So there is still is partnership and collaboration there. So I don't, I don't know that there's a specific reason to start from scratch. I think there is a value there. What I'm really trying to discern here is how those calls are received. Is that through standard dispatch? And then is dispatch given, you know, some questions to ask to try to distill the information about the appropriate response team? And then that, if that is the county, how do we get that information to them? And I'm most concerned about their bandwidth and their availability. You know, we're twenty-four seven, and often there are certain times in the wee hours where there might not be the availability of resources at that time. So I'd like to examine further. I have those discussions, especially when we're armed with the information showing us exactly how many calls could be diverted as we as we really look towards creating a program or working to enhance a program that already exists.
And could you repeat those numbers that you mentioned earlier in that one-year timeframe? Did I hear right, two hundred and some odd that were fifty-one fifties and forty-six that were? Forgot to write down what the forty-six were.
So there were approximately three hundred incidents in this past, let's just call it fiscal year, wherein a person was placed on a fifty-one fifty hole by a Walnut Creek police officer. What we tried to do, and I had mentioned this last week, was not all calls for service come in in such a way that you could just through a quick search, look and say, okay, there's a mental health crisis component to this call. So we've hand-searched eight hundred and sixty-one calls for service that were classified as a disturbance, what we call a four fifteen. And we found that forty-six of those eight hundred and sixty-one calls had a mental health component that likely could have been handled by non-police response. So to get to the appropriate picture, we're trying to dig deep into those numbers, especially for last fiscal year. I intend to present the raw data for the past five years and then put some tools in place prospectively so that we could capture the data that will be responsive to this this request.
So the data that you have provided us tonight wasn't just sitting on someone's desktop. It really takes. I mean, first of all, didn't we have about forty thousand calls this last fiscal year? Maybe it was more than that?
Yeah, just in the fiscal year was about forty-two thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven. But we also received over eighty thousand calls into dispatch. So some of those, we find it doesn't require police. Some of those do get referred to other agencies. It could be more suitable to con fire, could be out of jurisdiction. So those systems are in place right now to refer callers to other locations. We just have to dig into how that can work.
So back on the, how did you get to three hundred, three hundred and forty-six? You literally have to do this manually because they're classified in a certain way. And the component, you have to dig deep into the records to manually is what you use. So this wasn't just sitting on a desktop.
Correct. And if I could just elaborate, you know, we had one hundred calls for service that were classified as involving a mental health component. But we found that the individual did not meet the criteria. So recall that about six years ago, we put what we called study flags on the call for calls for service to get a sense of how many calls were related to individuals receiving or that were experiencing homelessness so that we could gauge the response and leverage our resources to include core. So I believe getting to these numbers is going to require the creation of some study flags so that we're getting that information at the outset. I I will say that it's still not going to be as easy as looking through, you know, these forty-two thousand calls this last fiscal year and.
If only that sounded easy.
But but we are still, what we're trying to do is create some visual depictions and have some data that shows, you know, this amount of calls could have potentially been diverted. So that's what we're looking into and hope to present here later this month.
And so if we're looking to do that with other agencies, Concord, Martinez, Pleasant Hill, you know, a regional collaboration even, not just a countywide. Each of those agencies is going to, I would imagine, have to do something similar to this in order to figure out really what the level of call volume that could have been diverted would have been. So because the staffing model is dependent on call volume, isn't it? Is it not?
Yeah. So our staffing and deployment model is really dependent, not just on workload, but the geographical response in a twenty-some-odd-square-mile city so that we could get there in appropriate response time. When somebody calls nine-one-one, they deserve to have us there in a reasonable amount of time. What I can tell you is this conversation is taking place everywhere. This is not unique to Walnut Creek. And I, you know, and you mentioned earlier, the California Police Chiefs Association. I've shared with you that I sit on that board. And we've discussed this recently. I know many other cities and municipalities are looking at some options, some opportunities. There are some, some agencies that might have a police officer paired up with a social worker, and that could be a response to homelessness. And I think that's part of this conversation as well in terms of being able to divert calls from the police. And and they'll might have other programs where they respond to maybe domestic violence or with a special. So that is a model. Those models are difficult to get off the ground, but I know they exist, and I know other agencies are pursuing them. But I think this is really going to be the focus of many agencies and chiefs is to dig in and find out what we could offer in terms of what has happened before and and what we anticipate to try to get a program like this identified, or at least to the foundation to build the program.
Okay, whether it's with the county or collaboratively and separately. Thank you, and thanks for the clarification.
All right. I'm watching to see if anybody has any further questions before we go to public comment. I'm seeing none. So off we go to public comment. So clerk, will you call in the first speaker, please?
Kathy Hicks.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Haskin and Councilmembers. My name is Kathy Hicks, and I am speaking on behalf of the Walnut Creek Library Foundation. The Library Foundation was encouraged by the discussion at the last council meeting about supplemental hours for the second half of the fiscal year. Councilmembers indicated interest in the city having dialogue with the county library staff to gain clarity on the possible options for supplemental hours and costs at both of the Walnut Creek libraries. The Library Foundation is open to working with the city to match the funds required for supplemental hours. As you know, the foundation passed a resolution to approve a one hundred thousand dollar grant Walnut Creek Friends of the Library a ten thousand dollar grant for a minimum of seventeen supplemental hours to partner with the city. However, the foundation understands the need to be flexible depending on the options provided by the county library to define how many supplemental hours are possible and at what cost. We are hopeful that the city will find a way to work in partnership with the foundation and the Friends of the Library to provide supplemental hours as we move forward. As we seek clarity, we appreciate Councilmember Silva's and Mayor Protem Wilks' comments on library hours this evening. Having access to consistent, open library hours is important to people. And the need only increases when the economy falters. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, former Mayor Hicks.
Dan H.
Can everybody hear me okay?
Yeah, Dan, go.
All right. Talking about the budget here. So I just found two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars in the budget. That can be used. Okay, ready? Well, the first hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars can be found by firing Officer Curtis Borman, B O R M A N. That's how much he makes. We pay him every year a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. We could be using that money to be paying for other services. Curtis Borman was proven thirty-one falsified police reports documented. April two thousand seventeen, Chaplin said, "You have repeatedly proven yourself incompetent in the handling of evidence and completion of reports and raise serious questions about your honesty. The department therefore has no choice but to terminate your employment." Chaplin said that. He's still on, but he hasn't been fired yet. And then you can save another hundred thousand dollars on banning tear gas. That's two seventy-two. So a hundred and thirty can go to all the schools to get crossing guards. And then another a hundred and forty can go to the twenty-four-seven mental health. So everybody listening to this in Walnut Creek, please Google Officer Curtis Borman, B O R M A N. We are paying him a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. Thirty-one falsified reports. Thirty-one. If any teacher, anybody professional, if Dan Buschke, anybody on the on the board had thirty-one falsified reports, you would not be sitting there. Anybody in any profession. And Chaplin is sitting there saying that we don't have money, and we're going to train and train and train. All we hear is train. That's not happening. The police are spread too thin, and they're not going to be trained up. They weren't trained up a year ago when they killed Miles Hall. Nothing's been done since then.
Thank you, Dan.
Owen Smith.
I'm unmuted, and the video's on. Can I share my screen? Clerk, city clerk?
Unfortunately, you cannot.
Oh, that's too bad. Okay. Well, first thing I wanted to do was to address Councilwoman Silva. She had earlier, in regard to the budget, this is budget-related, had talked about the the police outreach program to the homeless community. And for a short stint, I worked at the county as a part-time GIS guy in the flood control department after I got done flying jets for thirty years. And I wanted to relate to you that this, the homeless outreach program was done by the conservation and development people. It's actually a department at the county. It has nothing to do with the police. They'd send a couple of people out to talk to the homeless people and tell them, here are your options. Here's what you have to do because in three or four days, we're going to bulldoze your site. We're going to Public Works is going to come down and pick it up. There was never any police department involvement whatsoever. So a couple of modestly paid people would go out and would explain to them what their options are. Here's where you can sleep, and here's where you can get food. And in three days, this camp will no longer exist. And we had to do that for, to to prevent pollution in the bay because a lot of their stuff ends up in San Francisco Bay, and it was a violation of an empty's permit. But I wanted to, I wanted to tell you that that's something that you don't need police for. There's something else I wanted to mention, and that is recently because of COVID nineteen, my my workout routine has changed, and I go by Red Gear Estates Pool every morning in the mid-morning. And nearly every day, there's two or three of the seven mobile units, Walnut Creek Police Department, would show up in mid-morning and sit there through the lunch hour unless they get a call. And that's what you're paying for. So the talk is, talk is cheap, but there's a lot of waste in that department. And I think that before you cut everything else off, you should take a look at it. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Owen.
Vivian McHenry.
My gosh, you guys, sorry. This thing is so bizarre. So I'm glad that somebody talked about Officer Borman. I'm, you know, I just, Curtis Borman, I am just, we are just aghast and just at a loss for what appears to be a constant lack of accountability, a constant appreciation for accountability. And so whether it is poor performers that you keep on the payroll at the expense of the community and social programs and the arts and what have you, whether it is officers who declare under penalty of perjury that they forgot critical steps and protocols that led to Miles Hall's death, whether it is and have a history of shooting at people living with mental illness, whether it is June first, when you've got civil rights protesters that are out there completely unarmed and are met with militarized response and injured. And and the only explanation that I can recall are a bunch of fake tweets from white supremacist groups and couching in an argument about an officer that was shot in Oakland who happened to have been shot by a white supremacist group. So again, we're not, we're at a loss for the rationale behind attacking and assaulting peaceful protesters on June first and the continued and chronic lack of accountability, personal responsibility, or any sort of just apology just to the public. And I realize that there's still an investigation, or hopefully there is one that's still ongoing. And so that will be will, it remains to be seen what the official response will be. But at some point, there's going to have to be an appreciation for accountability from the city council for people to ability and trust from the public. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have someone on the phone that we're bringing in.
Hello?
Hello, may we know your name?
Hi, Mayor Haskew and city council members. My name is Susan Moon, the executive director of the Walnut Creek Library Foundation. We sent out an email last Friday to the community asking folks to add their names in support of the following statement. And in the past few days, we received 278 signatures. Walnut Creek's two public libraries are an essential resource for our community, providing valuable opportunities for people to come together to work, play, and learn. The current public health crisis has shown how vital our libraries are to maintaining the quality of life in Walnut Creek. At the same time, the economic fallout from the crisis is straining the city's finances and forcing difficult decisions about funding priorities. In the past, the city has funded 21 hours of operation per week at each of our two Walnut Creek libraries to supplement the 35 hours funded by the county. While full funding might not be feasible in the current fiscal year, we encourage the council to maintain as many supplemental hours as possible. In particular, given the interest expressed by the county to work with the city of Walnut Creek to find a way to maintain extra hours and the commitment by the Walnut Creek Library Foundation to help the city fund those hours, we urge the city to work with the county to determine the most feasible option for restoring supplemental library hours in the second half of the current fiscal year. Thank you for your consideration.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Yes.
And hi, Susan, it's Cindy Silva, and thank you for the comments and reaching out to the community. You know, I should have asked Kathy Hicks this, and I know she would have known the answer, so I apologize for just not thinking of it. You know, there has been a statement that the city has historically paid for these additional hours. And I'm sure you understand that in 2002, there was a measure on the ballot and the voters approved a special tax that basically funded these additional hours from 2002 through the end of fiscal year 2014. And so we only as a city have been taking up those additional funds. In 2014, we had the additional funds to be able to do it in the general fund. But I think we always knew that there was going to be a crisis at some point and these funds would become in question. Here's my question. Has the Library Foundation had any discussion about helping us figure out how to go back to the voters for a replenishment of that original voter-approved funding from 2002?
We have not at this time.
Right, maybe that, maybe, maybe y'all could do that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Lucas Carboni.
Hello, this is Lucas Carboni, Life Final Walnut Creek resident, he/him. I'm calling on this council not to adopt the current budget on imposing extreme on most departments, making virtually zero to budget crisis and nationwide movement, fund police entering the community form of relief, community measures, mental health care, affordable housing, et cetera. Our prevention strategy than our current approach. Some will cite the shooting on Inacio and Homestead yesterday to say we need to maintain current funding levels for the police or even increase its funding. But we need to remember is that the police couldn't intervene when it happened. The shooting took maybe 10 seconds and the police can't intervene in that time. Giving the cops more toys and further gold-plating pensions wouldn't have stopped the shooting. But what could have is comprehensive civilian crime prevention strategy to ensure no one would be so unwell as to shoot someone. This means we need better healthcare, poor relief, and mental health crisis response unit, and other strategies reducing crimes. Won't end to crime entirely, and I won't ignore data showing mentally ill people are statistically less likely to commit crime than non-mentally ill people. But spending money on these things will create forward peace in a far stronger community than the status quo. I also say this as someone who lives on Homestead. The shooting happened very close to where I live. I think I may have even heard maybe the victim, I didn't hear gunshots, but I may have heard the victim screaming or something. But, so this is something that is in my community, is in my neighborhood. I'm very worried about this issue. But I don't believe the police could have helped the victim during that second 10-second period because they didn't. And what would have helped is a strategy to prevent that shooting in the first place. Also, many police programs that we want to defund don't deal with private violent crime and ought to be civilian programs. Most notably, police handles mental health crisis response when it inevitably results in disaster as during Miles Hall's murder and handles traffic stops when it's a civilian agency should handle this. I can't tell you how many times I've heard community members of color discuss police harassment that specifically occurred during traffic stops. Eugene took the police out of mental health crisis response, but the council is citing all these reasons to not adopt that model, even though we could just adopt it, just slim down. And Berkeley just took the police out of traffic stops. Thank you.
Thank you, Lucas.
Natalie McCullough.
Hi, my name is Natalie McCullough. The police are expected to receive $26.7 million next year. Proportionally, this amounts to an increase. Spending more money on police trainings without accompanying that with serious budget cuts is effectively rewarding the police for bad policing. These trainings are only necessary because Walnut Creek PD has lost the public's trust. These trainings are only necessary because Walnut Creek PD has systemically used excessive force and in the case of Miles Hall, lethal force. Walnut Creek PD needs more training because they have failed and that failure should not be rewarded with additional funding. If Walnut Creek PD is serious about regaining the community's trust, they will need to take budget cuts just like the other departments. By refusing to cut the Walnut Creek PD budget in any serious way, it shows that they are not held to the same standards as everyone else. It is an insult. A cursory glance at the budget shows the other departments are being slashed. Arts and Rec, in addition with Public Works, is bearing the brunt of budget cuts and 20 Parks and Rec's employees are being fired. In contrast, not a single police officer is being let go. Opponents to police defunding often argue that police brutality is exaggerated and the problems are limited to a few bad apples. Well, in Walnut Creek, we know who some of those bad apples are. Why are the officers who killed Miles Hall still on the force? In any other profession, if you fail that badly, you get fired. Why are police exempt? Why are no police officers being laid off? I'm working on my master's degree. If I received even one or two warnings for plagiarism, I would be expelled. Curtis Borman falsified 31 reports and he's still employed. Frankly, many of us are sick and tired of seeing the police being held to a far lower standard than everyday Americans. As for the mobile non-police crisis response team, I am happy to see that the conversation is beginning. But I want to make it very clear that the public is calling for a non-police response, not especially trained cops. We are asking for non-armed response. I yield my time.
Thank you.
Scott Rafferty.
Scott? Are you, are you, are you there? Are you on mute?
Mayor, we have two Scott Raffertys online, so we're going to try to pull in the other one and see if.
Okay. Great, thanks. They have similar pictures. Scott?
Can you hear me?
Now we can, yes, thank you.
Thank you. You seem to have persuaded yourself that people who express concerns about the police at council meetings are out of step and that there is a silent majority that will defend the police instinctively, categorically, and without question. I think that is a dangerous assumption, but it's one that you have no choice but to make because your standing committee has met less than once a year. And it has received no analyses, no documents from the police. We know that because I've asked for the Brown Act collections from that committee and there isn't any. This is unlike any other city department. It's, it's not what we deserve from the council and the city management. And you're hearing objective economic concerns about the efficiency of our police. We're getting a 5% increase over the projections for this year while Arts and Recreation are getting cut 16%. It's not, it is, of course, Miles Hall and the, and the $400,000 in training that they are requiring, but there are also other efficiency problems. And you haven't told your constituents that their contract expires in three weeks. The contract is the source of a lot of the problems because it is what creates the arbitration process that doesn't work, that protects the police no matter what. You need to start talking about that and you need to explain the consequences of not having a police contract. It's not contracted as strong as the ones for librarians, which you cannot fire enough librarians and civil servants to fund a 5% increase for the police. And everybody in the city is going to be concerned about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Elizabeth Nguyen.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, thank you for your time. My name is Elizabeth Nguyen. I think it's ridiculous that you guys seemingly didn't even consider what we asked for, which was reallocating some of the funding for the police department to other community services that are being slashed left and right. Dan Buckshai said at least five times earlier tonight, you know, we just don't have the funds. We just don't have the funds. But we do. Chaplain said himself in the last meeting, "Our police department is bloated and incredibly too large in comparison to the population and the crime rate in our city. The officers who killed Miles Hall should be fired and Curtis Borman should have been fired a long time ago. I'm an educator and if I had even one slip up that was even close to what he's committed and the falsified evidence, I would be fired immediately. Fire them and do not hire anyone for their position. That's around $400,000 at least, which could be put to much better use in our community. I know the police union probably donated to all of your campaigns, but I implore you to listen to what your constituents want and have been telling you that they want for over a month now. Thank you, I yield my time.
Thank you.
Emily Moffett.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name's Emily Kath Moffett and I'm a resident of Walnut Creek. I'm a licensed marriage and family therapist and I've spent my career working in child welfare, first on a regional and state level and currently on a federal level. I've spent the last eight years working specifically in training and staff development, working with government agencies. I'm commenting tonight to bring two points to your consideration regarding budget decisions. There is a belief that the general public has about training and I've heard it indirectly represented tonight. And that's that training solves many or, many or all of our problems. Unfortunately, that's just not true. If you take a moment to learn a little bit about adult learning theory, you would learn that stand and deliver classroom training. Stand, stand and deliver classroom training is just a term that we use for going to a training in a classroom where someone stands at the front of the room and talks to you and trains. You would learn that stand and deliver classroom training is just not that effective. I bring this up as many, as money has been put in the police budget for training and it's my understanding that this has come directly from the great work of Bosaf. And I'd also, with that great work, I'd like to encourage the chief of police and the city council to focus beyond stand and deliver training with those training dollars and examine policies and trainings that would involve coaching and actual individual work with officers. And I understand that this is money set aside for the entire city employees, but it really should be focused on the officers. The second point I'd like to make is that there was an idea that was alluded to tonight about specially trained officers focusing on mental health. Of the five officers who were part of Miles Hall's death, two were on the crisis negotiations team and of those two, one was previously assigned to the mental health evaluation team. And even with those officers present, Miles Hall still died, which is very depressing and completely disheartening. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Emily.
Michael Sampson.
Hello. Okay, so this is just kind of a little, I've just got a bunch of thoughts set up and jotted down throughout the night. So y'all were just talking for a while about looking at call data to determine which number from that, from those calls, what percentage of calls would require a non-police response. Justin Waddell, I tweeted you actually a few weeks ago about this and I stated that we cannot allow the cops to investigate defunding themselves because of course we can't. They're not going to be able to provide an objective analysis of the data. So if we want an actual objective data analysis, then we need to get an outside group to ascertain and analyze the data. Otherwise, we can't trust that those numbers reflect actual, like the actual true real-life situation. And let's see, like, you guys have been talking a lot about, you know, how the police can partner with all these different responses. That's not what anyone is asking for. The police are not partners in this. Like the police need to stay out of it. They're not part of the planning process. They're not part of the management. They don't respond, like we're trying to get, like a non-police response is a non-police response. So police shouldn't be there, right? Cops shouldn't be part of that discussion. So as we're thinking about and discussing, you know, what expanded services look like, what we take away from the cops, like, the cops can't be part of that discussion. The cops can't provide objective data analysis. So basically just, just get them out of there so that, and they're not partners in this. Speaking specifically about the budget, so last, last week, we had a city council meeting that was seven hours long because people were telling you how they felt about this budget. And between now and then, nothing's changed. The budget looks exactly the same with all the same horrible priorities. Defund the police, invest in community.
Michael, thank you.
Gigi Crowder.
Okay. Getting ready for this lapse time. Are you able to hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I really wanted to appreciate the fact that the city now is speaking to specific funding for mental health training. I do not feel like it's any one city's responsibility. I feel like it should be an effort that's largely led by the county. So we at Fawcett and Nami Country Costa have started a letter-writing campaign and support a funding for a pilot program that would actually be in my biggest dreams. It would be named after Miles Hall and it would be everything we need in this county to have a 24/7 approach to responding to mental health crisis. Putting the responsibility onto the county. We'd like to see the program anchored in Walnut Creek. We'd like to see leadership from across the county with the Board of Supervisors and everyone acknowledging when people go into the field of law enforcement, they do not come in with a skill set to do social work. I've heard of another horrific case in Lafayette that just brought me to tears. Again, another African-American male who law enforcement unfairly treated, who had a mental health but was off of his medication and actually had dogs sick on him. And this just has to stop. It's a problem across the county. The county leadership have not picked this up as a major. The county leadership have not picked this up as a major issue. The MCRT does not work, so I'm hoping there are no dream that Walnut Creek have that they'll give some money to the county. And that would solve the problem. That's not the way it should work. The funding needs to be for a nonprofit organization and wouldn't it be wonderful if the Miles Hall Foundation could lead the effort and do all of the training needed and everything? With Ton and leadership role because there's no more experience than Trump's living experience to get the work done. She already has a crew of volunteers on the share of the mental health committee and you couldn't have a better group of people. Already doing the work as volunteers to acknowledge what needs to happen. So I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for stopping. I appreciate it. Thank you, Gigi.
Joshua Ferrer.
A budget is a moral document. Where we put our money says what our values are. This budget paints a stunningly punitive view of this city. This budget says that the best use of the plurality of our funds is not investing in people, not in art programs, not in protecting our most vulnerable. But in criminalizing policing and incarcerating them. This is a budget that takes as its very foundation fear. A fear bathed in this nation's toxic fumes of white supremacy, a fear of the dangerous black man. It is a fear that historically encouraged the creation of Walnut Creek as an all-white haven. That pushed its all-white residents to send death threats to the first few black residents to chase them out. It is a fear that today leads Walnut Creek police officers to patrol the city's black residents, to make them feel watched and afraid. Until legitimate those fears when police pulled the trigger on Miles Hall. It is a fear that has led the city council to make virtually zero changes to the police department since Miles murder. And to follow the gassing of its teenage residents with not a single word of criticism. This budget does not curtail that fear, but feeds it. What will be the outcome of more of the same, of spending our dollars on police instead of social workers, on guns instead of books, on patrols rather than plays? There will be more arrests, more police brutality, more humans locked in cages and spit out to face a lifetime of legal discrimination. It is a budget that treats people as criminals rather than as humans and that endorses cages over creativity. We are at a once in a lifetime moment to make a commitment to real change. You, the city council, have the power to make that change a reality. You have thus far refused to do so. This budget is an affirmation of the status quo. Your vote for this budget is an endorsement of white supremacy. Thank you.
Thank you, Joshua.
Leo James Barry.
Hi, me again. I second what everyone else is saying, we need a non-police response. And that means non-police, people without guns who are not, because first response is not violence. We need that responding to mental health crises. I think that sending police to mental health crises just further perpetuates the stigma against mental health. Seeing us as criminals or somehow not worthy of being treated like humans. And that's a problem that people, mental health advocates have been fighting against. And I do think, like I think it was Gigi said earlier, it would be great to have people involved with Miles Hall Foundation. And specifically like Ton Hall and their whole network involved in leadership of that. Because I don't think throwing police at a problem that's made worse by police is going to fix anything. It's like throwing bleach on a dirty floor when you could have sent a Roomba, you know? Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you.
Izzy.
Hey, I thought I'd show myself this time since I'm getting to know you guys a little bit better. You have referenced why, what the justification is behind cutting the full-time employees from arts and rec. While I don't know if those are 100% founded, there hasn't been a lot of justification as to why you haven't cut any full-time employees for filled positions from the police department. So I know there's probably a lot of stuff that a regular citizen like me doesn't understand, like police union influence and political stuff that I don't really know what you guys deal with as a city government. But I just want to ask you if those things are worth the safety and comfort of your citizens. And ask you, are you even pushing for these things? For the officers who killed Miles to even be taken off active duty and put on desk duty? Like, not even about the funding of them, but they did something wrong, so they should face a consequence. And same with Curtis Baumann, I know that was probably something to do with the union, but it's now, it's now we're unsafe. It's a symbol and of physical reason that we're unsafe that these people are policing our streets. So I know that you can't address everything in real time and you guys are doing stuff behind closed doors. But I just want to know, or would, I want to ask you guys to please push for these things. Because I don't really see what it takes away from you other than something that's not worth it, like political gain or financial gain or whatever the reasoning is. Thank you.
Lindsay Sweetnam.
Hello, I just wanted to speak one more time to urge you not to approve this budget. There is nothing meaningful in here to show that the city manager believes that there is a problem needing changing or that they care. Appreciate the $100,000 being earmarked for mental health services, but we can all see what percentage of the budget that is compared to other line items. I understand it's in the early stages, but you know, there's easy money to cut out of this budget and it's not being done. Fire Curtis Borman, as my fellow community members have mentioned, this isn't a reach or a big ask, this is the bare minimum. Again, as people have said, it seems like there must be some sort of police union influence behind this. Or the chief is just completely immoral. I don't know which one it is. I keep hearing Chief Chaplain talk about the mental health training that his officers are receiving. And I'm really glad that training is happening, I truly am. But we need to stop training the police to do things that's not their role and expecting everything to be fixed. As someone with a master's degree in counseling psychology and as a licensed marriage and family therapist in the state of California. I find the notion that a few hours of training could match my three hours of graduate, three years, sorry, of graduate school. 3,000 supervised hours before being allowed to even sit to take exams, to become a licensed therapist in the state of California, to be offensive. I don't want to teach the police to be mental health professionals, I want mental health professionals responding to mental health crises. The police do not need to be the ones doing homeless response. I know if you're familiar with the homeless outreach team in Sierra Francisco, I want social workers responding to homeless outreach. This budget is insulting and it is a clear statement of your values. They are not my values and I'm so glad to see that they are not the values of many of my fellow community members. And we will not be quiet until there is real change. I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Eva McCandless.
Hi, city council. I don't have much to say beyond what everybody's already said tonight. But just to reiterate some things that you could do to increase the budget for other things beyond the police, the things that you are defunding. You can fire Curtis Borman, as we said, he's doing his job terribly and he should not still have a job. Even police officers have admitted that. At the very least, suspend the officers who shot Miles Hall until the investigation is complete. But in my opinion, I think you should just fire them. Stop patrolling, I don't understand why police officers are patrolling, I don't think that really stops much crime. Disarm the officers that are responding to calls unless they are violent calls or calls where someone's armed. And for the love of God, do not defund crossing guards. Do you guys realize how ridiculous you look? Parents have to email you asking you to keep crossing guards to protect their children. Meanwhile, you funnel $26.7 million into the police who make our community unsafe for anyone besides wealthy, homonizing white people like our city council. Lwella, Kevin, Sydney, Matt, Justin, I want you to know that you can be changemakers. You can do something great for our city and lead our country. And it takes you guys being brave and listening to the few of us who are speaking out. I know there's a silent majority and it's scary to go against the people of your city. But they're all white and wealthy and homonizing and that's not the city that we want to have. We want a diverse, beautiful city and it means you have to make it more welcome to other than the majority. So please just look inside yourselves and try to act out of love instead of fear. And make choices for people who don't look like you because it's really necessary. And I just really hope that you guys can do that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Shyama Clooney.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Shyama.
I don't know why it says my video has stopped, but I'm going to go ahead and...
Oh, you just muted yourself. Please unmute, Shyama.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, it says my video has stopped, so I'm not going to waste everyone's time trying to start it up again. Technology is not my strong suit. But you all know me by now, you first heard from me, what, in July of last year after I watched the body cam video of Miles Hall's death. And you know, I'm a member of the administrative team for Friends of Scott, Alexis and Ton Hall. I have a few points I want to make. First of all, I want to appreciate and acknowledge the efforts that have been made thus far. By Chief Chaplain, by Dan Buckshai, by Mayor Haskew. Around allocating some budget to training, crisis intervention training, de-escalation training, mental health training. And the diversity and inclusion committee and task force sounds potentially promising. And I also want to acknowledge the $100,000 that Mayor Haskew proposed and that is now reflected in the budget for a non-police response. That said, I wanted to point out that a group of, I think it's almost 500 members of FOSAF. Has been meeting and discussing the issue of what happened to Miles for over a year now. I want to remind you that, that the people who work on the admin team are people who in 100% of the cases. Are fully employed people with families of various sizes. We did meet with the city manager and his staff 18 times over the last year. But we exchanged myriad emails, texts, messages, probably in the multi-thousands on a monthly basis. That's not an exaggeration. We meet every two weeks for two hours at a time. We have had multiple explanatory calls with our spouses about why we dedicate so much time to this effort. And it is simply because we understand the sanctity of Miles Hall's life. And his life and the value of his life was commensurate with that level of dedication. I also want to acknowledge the young people who come out to these Zoom calls to talk to you every week or so. And I want to remind you that young people voted at a larger percentage and greater rate in 2018 than they had in 20 years prior to that. These are, these are, I'll wrap it up, but these are voters. So if only from a self, you know, a self-serving perspective. I implore you to pay attention to our request for at least another $250,000 to be allocated to a non-police mental health response. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I now close public comment and bring it back to council. Are there any additional questions or are we ready to move to comments?
I think I have some additional questions, but I need a couple of, I mean, I...
Yeah, okay.
There was a lot of information that has been put forth.
Madam Mayor, perhaps we can take a five-minute break?
Right, let's take a break.
Check and see if there's been any other information been sent to us too.
Actually, there has been. So would you please, during your five minutes review, what, what has, what has been posted? Thank you.
I think we need 10 minutes.
All right, I will give you 10 minutes. That means we will be back at 9:30. No, 10, 10. That's 15, 10 minutes. Welcome back to the continuation of the Tuesday, July 7th, 2020 City Council Regular Meeting. And I have brought this back to council and is there, oh. Is there any further questions on the council members' hearts, heart? Yes, please, Councilmember Silva.
Um, I think I have just two questions and I appreciate all of the input and public, public comments because I think it, sometimes the public comment reinforces where we need to get some additional clarification. One of the comments was, um, and Dan, I think I'm going to ask the question of you, was that we have a 5% increase in the police budget. I don't see a 5% increase. I see a $900,000 decrease, which is 3% to 4%, but let's just say it's not an increase from what I can see. Am I mis- misreading table five in the staff report?
I'm going to defer to Kirsten for the details on this, but your numbers sound correct to me.
Okay. So I guess, let's see if she comes in.
Yes. The, um, that is correct. It is a 900,000 decrease in the police budget.
And that decrease, I mean, really, if we are adding money into the budget, that 900,000 decrease is after we actually added 100,000 for additional training. So it's real, it's really a million-dollar decrease and a $100,000 add-on. But that's, that's just my math.
That is correct.
All right, um. Dan, I'm going to go back to you. Thank you, Kirsten. Um, can we get clarification again? There seems to be. Do we have work for the, for most of, some of these arts and rec employees? Can we, do we have work to give them if we kept them on the payroll?
Not that it's related to their duties. I mean, the responsibilities for providing services, whether it be at the leisure center or through some arts and recreation services, we simply cannot provide because of the shelter in place and the social distancing requirements per the county health order, so that there is not that work to be done.
All right, so, okay, I just wanted to reiterate that. And my final question, actually, I had three, I'm sorry, Mayor. There seems to be some confusion between the homeless outreach team from the county and who those, and maybe Margot has to, if Margot, I don't know if Margot's here or Sandy Meyer. But the hu- the difference between the state, who the homeless outreach team people are from the county that we helped to fund a team of, and what the police department homeless outreach team officers are doing. They're doing different things and versus what the Trinity Center is doing as a social services nonprofit.
Yeah, I can speak to that generally. Um, it's part of an overall system of care. It's one of many, many components. And um, you know, I was just reading over the county budget earlier today and anybody who wants to read more about the system of care should go to the Health and Human Services portion of the county budget. And uh, there's quite a primer on the broader system of care that the county primarily provides. That said, yes, we do partner for what's called the CORE team. And candidly, I don't recall what the acronym stands for.
Also acronym.
But is uh, it is related to homelessness and is effectively uh, social workers or something similar, caseworkers that go visit uh, what are generally chronically homeless that um, and try to get them into services. And um, to try to get them into treatment if they need any and ultimately to help them find housing so that they're no longer housing. I mean, that's the big, you know, the solution to homelessness is housing. And that's obviously a challenge because we have a housing shortage at all income levels in the Bay Area and Walnut Creek's not excluded from that. So that's really what the CORE team does. They'll also, you know, do babies, basically wellness checks for known encampments and areas, um, hand out supplies if we're in there. And we fund that uh, for a team that serves both Concord and Walnut Creek. We've done that for a couple of years now. In addition, there's the PD homeless outreach. And you know, it's, it would be nice to say that, you know, theoretically, there's clear lines that, you know, CORE does this, Trinity does X, and the homeless outreach team does X. But in practice, they all overlap considerably. Homeless Outreach Team are two officers who are dedicated to responding to homeless-related calls and to also doing some of the same types of wellness checks on some of our folks. You know, to give you an example, there was um, one that sticks out with me more recently just because someone sent a letter thanking our officers a while back. Somebody was in a difficult state, a homeless person. Um, they were brought in, I think, to emergency room and it was imperative that they take some medication. They couldn't afford the medication. The homeless outreach team officer helped get them to pharmacy and actually paid for the cost of the pharmacy out of their own pocket so that the individual um, could get the meds they need and hopefully get better and, and be on the road to recovery. So there's some overlap. There's definitely some social work that our homeless outreach team is doing, our police officers. But it's also some PD work. Kind of, you know, there are some that do get arrested because they commit a violent crime and, and our team responds as well. And then obviously, there are many other services. There's uh, some of the safe parking program that is provided at St. John Vianney Church, where I believe it's up to 10 vehicles. Individuals can park overnight. There's a bathroom that's provided. There's security that's provided. I believe, if I recall correctly, that it's mostly utilized by uh, single females or people with uh, small families who feel less safe parking on the street somewhere else. And so they feel more secure overnight. We do have the Trinity Day Center that does allow folks to come in for meals, shower, do laundry during the day. And then during the uh, inclement weather months, we do have the overnight shelter at the Armory near Civic Park where folks can go to get out of the elements in the evening. So that's a, you know, a sample of the system of care. In addition, during COVID, there are more hand washing stations, more porta-potties that have been put out to uh, to help hopefully folks stay cleaner than they would be otherwise. And there's been a big effort to put many of the homeless folks into hotels as well to help, you know, protect them and others from coronavirus. And that's been reasonably successful. As you can imagine, it's expensive and so cost is a big piece of it. But federal money has helped and we've worked with the county to do that. So that just gives a sampling and that is one of a very small piece of the overall system of care.
So there are social workers from the county. There are caseworkers also out of Trinity Center. And there's a collaborative response. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just wanted to revisit.
I just wanted to revisit an item that we talked about a little bit earlier this evening. And there was a reference to the letter that the mayor had sent to the county in regard to expressing our interest in expanding the scope of the Mobile Crisis Response Team. And just, I think this was, this comment was made, but maybe the city manager could just clarify that we received a letter back from the county supervisors, Supervisors Anderson and Mitchoff, just before this meeting where they are scheduling this item for a special mayor's conference meeting in mid-September. If you could elaborate on that, that would be helpful, I think.
Yeah, I think you pretty much summed it up, that they responded, that they received our request and they would like to, as a starting point, provide a presentation. I don't know what the exact forum would be, but to all the cities that are interested about what services currently exist and how they're utilized, how cities can better integrate with those and then have further discussions about what would be desired in addition to what is currently available. So I think it sounds like a very reasonable starting point. But the details of the exact structure, exactly when it would be held, the forum, still need to be ironed out. As you noted, we just received that a short while before this meeting.
But all, all mayors and council members from, from throughout the county would be invited to attend this?
Sounds like it.
Okay. And then I'll follow, I appreciate that. Thank you. And I appreciate the correspondence. I went back and forth on how receptive the supervisors were to our request. And switching gears to crossing guards, it was a question I had asked last time and Mayor Protem asked this time, and I'm struggling a little bit with, I appreciate that we kind of looked at this 14% cut across the board for specialty groups that we fund. And for crossing guards, that translates to $18,000 among seven schools, we heard. But I don't have a sense for is what that means from a practical matter. Does that mean one less crossing guard per, per day or per week at each of the schools? Or what does that mean in terms of real-world effects?
So the, the impact is still being talked about with the schools and with Public Works. However, what I can tell you is that it translates to approximately a 7% reduction in service hours. And so only 7% because the other 50% of that 14 is, is picked up by, by either the parent faculty or the Walnut Creek School District. So they're, they're still working through what that's going to translate to. And then also keeping in mind any considerations in the event that COVID pandemic changes how kids are brought back to school. So it may impact how many crossing guards are needed. So they're still having those discussions with Public Works and all the interested stakeholders. And currently, they do have a meeting scheduled for the 13th of this month with Walnut Acres as part of that ongoing conversation.
Yeah, I could just add to that. That is a very good point, Kirsten, about what the plan is for the various school districts related to COVID. I live in the Mount Diablo School District and we recently received correspondence that kids would be going physically to school two days a week, staying home two days a week, and one day there would be no school. So it'd be a four-day school week of which two would be in-person. I don't think it's 100% final, but I think it's their final draft that they had proposed to the community. So it's subject to change. So I think that raises a very good point that the need for crossing guards may be lessened. Now granted, there would still be four days of kids going back and forth because they'd effectively be, two kids would go Monday, Wednesday. A different set of kids would go Tuesday, Thursday, but not having Wednesdays at all may, may lessen the cost of crossing guards. But those are the types of details that do still need to be worked out, council member.
And then, thank you, thank you, city manager. And either to you or maybe the mayor who can refresh my recollection. But I recall another item that was identified for potential cuts where school crisis counselors, but our staff was able to identify alternative sources of funds to keep them funded. Is that, am I remembering that correctly?
That sounds correct to me, but I'm going to defer to either Kirsten or Katie to verify that. But I do believe that was part of the CDVG funding discussion. And maybe that hasn't come to council. Maybe that came to the Housing and Community Development Committee. But that is the, the intent, as I understand it.
Yes, that is correct. Other funding was identified.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Protem. Thank you. My question is piggybacking off of Councilmember Francois's. Is it possible that once Public Works and staff is working with the schools to determine the crossing guard situation and what's going to be required or how that will work with those funds that the city has, can that be brought back to our Public Education Committee? I, I'm not sure. I can't remember actually who's on that. But if that can be brought back there with the report, just so that we're staying in touch with that, we don't let this go too far. If, if, for example, this is not going to be enough to help fund the crossing guards and they can't come up with anymore, saving a child's life crossing street is a, is a small price to pay for figuring out to come up with another $18,000.
If that's a question, then, yeah, I mean, certainly if that's the will of the council, that's something that could come back to the Public Education Committee, certainly.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I ask? Yes. Not to belabor the point, but we have two different districts and the Walnut Creek District is not, I want to be sure we're equitable and that this isn't a single school problem because I didn't see any letters from, it was just one school I saw letters from. So it would be helpful of Public Work, when staff is talking, to try to determine the source of the lack of funds so that we can understand it and not assume it's across the board. Particularly if the lack of funds would be only $500 because the cost of the crossing guards, if the crossing guard services will be needed 20% less because there is no school a certain one day a week, that's 20% less in funding. Maybe this is really down to a few dollars.
Not seeing any more questions. I have none. Pardon me. We are now at the point of discussion. Councilmember Waddell, would you like to start?
Sure. And I apologize, I'm going to be a little bit verbose tonight, but to address a lot of the, the community concerns that came up. First, let me start off by thanking everyone that has spoken tonight and really over the last few meetings. I know that they're long and challenging, but please know that your, your comments are truly valued. During this time, I have listened intently to the passion and the conviction that so many of our community members on all sides have spoken about what direction the city should proceed and of course, what should be funded. While situations where everyone gets everything that they want occur seldomly, I hope that everyone knows, no matter what side of the issue you're on, that while you may not get everything that you want, you are being heard. I've heard you in the hundreds of emails I have received, the many in-person and phone conversations that I have participated in, and in our public meetings, including this one. I will say it again, you have been heard. As for the many statements that we've heard tonight and in the past few meetings, that there has been no response or seen actions related to defunding the police requests, I strongly encourage everyone to go back and review the council meeting on June 16th. During that meeting, I clearly addressed this request head-on. I listed out eight high-level and specific requests that I will be pushing at the council level and at the subcommittee level to address many of the actions during the looting and the protests. And just as importantly, how we police our community. Change takes time and for many reasons, change takes even longer in government. I know it's frustrating. I am frustrated. Now, as it relates to some of the examples that were shared tonight, and there are some examples of other communities that have already quote-unquote "defunded" the police or adjusted their budget. I strongly encourage individuals to review what has actually occurred in those situations, two of which were addressed or referenced as examples tonight. Camden, New Jersey did defund their police. That is true. But they, that was only done to create a new county-level department. The representative, his name's Representative Nora Cross, who represents Camden, said in a recent interview that some of the major changes made with the transition include community policing, banning chokeholds, focusing on de-escalation, and mandating body-worn cameras, all of which we have already implemented here in Walnut Creek. On top of that, they actually added 31 more officers to their streets. Berkeley was another city that was referenced. Yes, they did just cut $9 million from their budget on July 1st. That is true. But they did so by diverting overtime and cutting non-filled positions that even the police department says that they didn't need. They are actually scheduled to add more police officers to the street, into their force, over the next two years. Now, these are, self-admittedly, only two situations, but I could add to the list from LA to New York, all relatively doing the same things with their budgets. Now, to be clear, this is in no way should be taken to say that there's no changes that are required. In fact, I have heard not one person in the hundreds of emails, the dozens of phone calls and in-person conversations that I've had, and including these public meetings, that has said that the status quo is acceptable. But what I, what I am saying is that these changes require more than a month to achieve. Yet, in working together as a community, rather than one side versus another, we'll go a long way to achieving our shared vision. And we do have a shared vision, a community where all feel welcome and unafraid. I know, I know that we have it all, we have in us, all of us, to do so. And I look forward to providing that leadership to make it happen. Anyone looking to have a conversation, and I've offered this before, please reach out. All of my contact information, all of it, is on my website. And before I get into the budget, I'd like to address a few staff-related issues. As we've been discussing this proposed budget, of course, it includes layoffs. Now, as someone that has been on both sides of this conversation, I know it is extremely difficult for everyone involved. These decisions are not taken lightly and are processed and addressed with reflection and consideration that the decisions are just merely not numbers on a piece of paper, but the decisions have a deep and ongoing impact on many of our community members. For all of those that are ultimately affected, I know that words cannot mute the impact, nor can they mute your feelings and the feelings that you'll go through. But please know that my network is open to you. And please, as some of you have already done so, reach out and connect. I'm more than happy to assist in any way that I can. As for the staff that have worked so diligently on this budget, and as I stated in our last meeting, it is hard enough to complete the budgeting process on a regular schedule with a staff that has specific knowledge on the budget and knows it backwards and forwards. However, that is not the case in this situation. The fact that COVID hit and threw the entire process into what we now have in front of us, on top of having multiple new management level and staff member positions that are fresh to the team, just shows that Walnut Creek is still the place for highly talented individual, individuals in the government sector. Also, it should not go unnoticed that there have been massive budgetary cleanup effort. There has been a massive budgetary cleanup effort that has done, that has been completed in order to ensure that we are categorizing expenses correctly and making the budget much easier to understand and to follow and ensure greater transparency in the process. So again, as I stated last meeting, and I'll state it again tonight, thank you. Now for the budget itself. First, I am pleased to see that Walnut Creek continues to attempt, to attempt to address the mental health care and homelessness issues in our community. While I know that there's still a lot more work to do, it should be noted that we have made, made great strides in this arena. Over the past few years, we have made, not only made homelessness one of the council's top four priorities, but we supported the Winter Night Shelter, partnered with surrounding communities to invest in our own CORE team, created a specialized team in WCPD to interact and handle homelessness issues, and dedicated a significant amount of time on the council and staff level to work with the FOSEF partnership to address many of the important community issues, including mental health, all of which would continue with this budget. Additionally, while I wish there could be more that would be given at this time, the city of Walnut Creek has taken a leadership role in advocating for more resources to address mental health and the responses to medical, medical health care issues in our community with neighboring cities and the county. While $100,000 included in this budget should not be perceived as a stopping point, is a clear indication that we continue to take this situation and this issue seriously and will not turn a blind eye to this important issue in our community. The money is addition, in addition to the chief's dedication and commitment to providing data for the community and the council to make evidence-based changes to our policies and procedures if required. This is absolutely the first and necessary step, the necessary steps of many, to start to address this issue and begin the discussion with the community members that will occur hopefully over the next few months. I look forward to reviewing the data and engaging with the community to address any changes that the facts dictate on the Public Safety Subcommittee and on the council. And lastly, I would say, most importantly, I am pleased, after many years of only my advocacy, we are starting to see the implementation of a zero-based budgeting framework. While I still have questions about to what extent the framework was utilized and how it has been followed. And it should also be noted that this framework was only utilized on the nondiscretionary budgetary items. It is clear that this needs to be extended to encompass our entire budget. The fact that we're able to do this outstanding, this, this is outstanding and should be complemented and undoubtedly extended. My hope is that we can leverage this effort more broadly and expand it to all costs throughout our city and realize the benefit, that benefits that come from its implementation now that its naysayers have been proven incorrect. Yet, even with all these positives, as I've indicated in the last few meetings, I'm still inclined to vote no on this budget. First, for the library hours. I was encouraged to see some movement by the, by the council majority to push towards providing funding for these extra library hours. I still have concern that there's a lack of commitment now. A few years back, I was proud that I, along with my fellow council members, stepped forward to continue to fund the extra hours for this necessary service once Measure Q was sunsetted and the funds were exhausted. As the city manager stated tonight, the operating procedures for libraries have changed dramatically during these times, but the community need clearly has not. As such, I would strongly encourage that we show the support of our libraries and the dedication of the Library Foundation, who has graciously stepped forward with $100,000 commitment and make the appropriate, the budget, budget adjustments now, rather than kicking the can down the road and hoping for a financial improvement in the future. Second, our reduction to capital projects. I still have serious concerns about the effects of the continued reduction of funding to capital projects. Many of you may have remembered that I objected loudly when the decision was made to reduce the previously approved percentage contributed from the general fund to the capital project budget. This was due to the fact that each one of us, every one of us, have previously stated that our infrastructure is in need of major enhancement or replacement. While thankfully, I was able to, able to advocate and achieve support for not utilizing capital funds to support our ongoing expenses, there is no doubt in my mind that our infrastructure issues have not and will not go away. Additional restrictive reductions will only continue to compound the problem that we have not addressed for years. I fail to see, on one hand, how everyone in this council agrees that we should focus on our infrastructure enhancements and invest in them, but then on the other hand, continuously take away funding to support that effort. Reserves, the use of reserves is the most concerning to me. There is no doubt that this is a unique situation that does broadly There is no doubt that this is a unique situation that does broadly need the definition to use our reserve funding. Yet, it is in my opinion that these should only be used when two specific situations are achieved. The first one is that there are no other options other than utilizing them. And the second is, there is at least a strong possibility that you'll get to a point where revenues match the expenditures with the use of those funds, both of which clearly have not been met at this time. If this goes through tonight, the council majority would have projected to use a significant percentage of our fiscal and catastrophic reserves, compounded by the fact that the council majority utilized over two million of these reserves to balance last year's fiscal shortfall. While it is clear that across this country, businesses are opening up, and we're seeing that here in Walnut Creek. People are going back to work and many people are venturing out, which I hope gives everyone hope, I know it gives me hope. I'm very happy to see that this is occurring, of course, with social distancing. Yet, there are hotspots that are flaring up, including right here in Walnut Creek and our surrounding communities, which has already caused a slowdown in the lifting of our stay-in-place order. Additionally, if we, we must also consider the serious possibility of a second wave that will occur in this fall, in which case we'll need these reserves to ensure that we continue even the most basic of services that are required for a city to function. We should be looking at making the hard decisions now rather than gambling that we won't need more of a reserves later. That is a risky, risky gamble that I do not believe this council should take. Now, at a risk of sounding like a broken record, I'm compelled to reiterate my call now more than ever for this council to take, undertake a disciplined, zero-based budgeting approach to prepare, to prepare us for whatever our financial environment that we'll interact with here shortly. We should assess a long, uh, we should assess a long-term strategic public-private partnership model for programs and services that can be provided by the public sector, by the private sector, even as subsidized by the city. We should enforce our already implemented policies, fix it first specifically, and go forward, uh, go farther by implementing policies that I have advocated for, like PEGO, to stop the process of approving items that are over and above our current budget projections without a known revenue source for paying for them. In my adult lifetime, I have been through three large-scale financial challenges, two thousand, two thousand eight, and now twenty twenty. In Walnut Creek, each time, the community met the challenge with a hope that the steps taken to close the gap of that time would not reoccur. This is the time to undertake a principled and rigorous budgeting process with a long-term focus, adherence to policies, to navigate, navigate us through this crisis, rebuild our reserves, and set a long-term agenda that builds upon our last successes, our past successes, while finally recognizing and addressing our opportunities for improvement. And with that, Mayor, I yield.
Councilmember Francois, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to all the members of the audience who called in, wrote in, participated in this process. As many of you know, this, I think this was our seventh council meeting between the two budget years, last year and this year, to address budget issues. There have been nine finance committee meetings. In addition to the twelve million dollar deficit we had to address, this year, there was over a ten million dollar deficit hanging over our heads from the eighteen to twenty fiscal year. So, there was a lot of hard work that went into making these numbers work by our city manager, by Ms. LaCass, by our finance committee members. And I, all in all, I believe they have, have struck the right balance, and I reached that conclusion probably for three primary grounds. I, I am in support of this budget because it, it reduces employee layoffs to the greatest extent possible. It increases funding for diversity and mental health training to the tune of a half a million dollars. And also importantly, it sets aside funds to expand the reach of the county's mental, uh, mobile crisis response team, which as many people listening know, provides a non-police response to adults suffering from mental health crises, people like Miles Hall. So, all in all, given those issues and the difficult decisions we made, I think that this budget reaches the right conclusion. I would, I want to respond to a lot of the comments that were raised about defund the police. And I'll, I'll just put it out there because the comment was made that either me or some of my colleagues make decisions based on campaign contributions. And I'll just let you know that the campaign contribution limit in Walnut Creek when I ran two years ago was a hundred and eighty-five dollars. I don't make any of my decisions based on that. I make all of my decisions based on what's in the best interest of the community. And I mostly found that out by walking door to door and talking to thousands of people. People who didn't give me a dime, they gave me something much more valuable. They gave me their time, and they talked to me. And they talked to me about what they care about this community and what they want, they want to see the future of this community look like. So, I'm sensitive to that. I'm sensitive also to a lot of the young people who called in. And in particular, to Mr. Ferrer, I hear you, and I have expanded my reading list. I am reading How to Be an Anti-Racist. So, I appreciate being educated on these issues, and I am listening. But to the core issue of defunding the police, I'm, I'm not convinced that the amount we spend on the police is out of balance with our history or the pattern of other Contra Costa cities or other cities in the Bay Area for that matter, including Berkeley and some of the larger cities that were mentioned. Police is a core service that the city provides. The county doesn't provide that for us. And as we have discovered through this multi-meeting process, most of the police budget is personnel. So, the concept of defunding the police means laying off people. The chief spoke at the last meeting that if he had to reduce staffing, it could lead to the elimination of programs like the school resource officers who are at both of our high schools and middle schools to attend to problems before they become major issues, to the homeless outreach patrol, to the motor units, to the detectives who will investigate that shooting that happened yesterday, and other specialty law enforcement teams. And more troubling to me, it could leave our police department with not enough resources to safely patrol our neighborhoods and our commercial core. I do want to acknowledge and appreciate the group, the efforts of FOSAF to bring several of the issues to our attention, primarily the non-police response to folks suffering from adult, from mental health crises. I, I appreciate Ms. Clooney's letter and also her, her kind comments. I am of the position that I'd like to, I think the, the funding that we have in this budget for the mobile crisis response team is the appropriate first step. It's only a first step. But I do believe the next appropriate step is for us to take up the county and our supervisors on their offer to meet with the other mayors and council members to discuss how we can expand the reach of this program countywide. I also want to, um, to thank Ms. Crowder for an email she sent us about a month ago, which was an interview with President Obama that I found, uh, very helpful to me personally to hear from the president in terms of, well, about the, the challenging times we're in and what we as elected officials can do to respond to them, and also to learn more about, um, the task force that he created on Twenty First Century Policing. And I'm interested in, in exploring how we can ensure that we've embodied those principles in our city and in our department. One other item that I was struck by, uh, was in a letter we received from Walnut Creek downtown. And it was mostly in support of the police, but it also had a comment that resonated with me, and I, and hopefully it does with my colleagues as well as that. The Walnut, the Walnut Creek Police strives for excellence, and while we admit we can't all do, but we still admit that we can do better and implement change when needed. And I think that's right, and I, I embrace that. And my expectation is our police is unbiased and well-trained and treats everyone in this community fairly and equally. That's what I expect of our police. There are two modifications, I would say, and I, to the budget, and they're the only changes that I want to, would want to see made, I believe, based on what we have so far. I don't know that, in terms of the extended library hours, I appreciate the Library Foundation and former Mayor Hicks, developing the funding to allow for a private-public partnership on extended library hours in the second half of the year, assuming the library is open and we can reach agreement with the county. I would like us to, at, at very, at the very least, have a separate motion on that, that we're directing staff to work with the county and the Library Foundation on extended hours at both branches for the second half of the year. And it would essentially be authorizing up to a hundred, whatever it is, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty-five thousand in, in reserve funds if we need to tap those for that purpose. That's one item. I'm also concerned about the crossing guards, and I understand that the school schedules are a little in flux, but I, I appreciate the mayor pro tem saying perhaps that's an issue that Councilmember Weddell and I can, can monitor on the Public Education Committee. We have a meeting on September first, and maybe we'll have more information at that point. But I'm inclined to restore those funds so that there's a crossing guard there every day for all seven of those schools. Those are my comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Silva.
Um, first, I will start by thinking, like my colleagues have, all of those who have participated in this process. It has been a long process, and it's not one that has, um, having been on this council for a while, it has been a unique situation where um, you have a pandemic that also affects the, the economy across this country, across the world, and it's taking us into a public health crisis and an economic crisis at the same time. And it occurs at the end of one budget cycle, just weeks, literally, or a hundred and five days before the end of a budget cycle, and it drills a ten million dollar hole in your budget, which is about eleven or twelve percent of last year's budget. And then, because it's recurring and it's continuing to exist, it drilled a twelve million dollar hole in this next year's budget. That is, um, not common, and it's been a challenge. And I really want to say thank you to all of our staff for what you have been through over the last three months and what it's taken. It's a heavy lift to go from, oh, an expectation of a balanced budget with significantly more revenues to one where you had to just literally flip the switch. And while you're trying to figure out how to keep the community safe and healthy and how to keep our employees safe and healthy, you're also trying to figure out how to keep everyone paid and how to figure out how we go forward. So, um, thank you across the board. I also appreciate the input we've had on library hours, crossing guards, mental health services, um, what is the role of police in our community, et cetera, and arts and recreations programs. I will start by saying that there, these are the things that, you know, you want to be able to adopt a budget and say you're happy about it. But this is one of those times when it's very difficult. There are things to be appreciative about and to look forward to, but there are also things that are unfortunate and that I know my colleagues and I have spent a lot of soul-searching hours about, for me, late at night and early in the morning. Um, arts and recreation, it is unfortunate. It is a centerpiece of what we do in Walnut Creek. It's what differentiates us from so many other communities, not only in Contra Costa, but in Alameda County. I was looking at the Berkeley budget yesterday. Berkeley, a million dollars out of a five-hundred-million-dollar budget, they barely put in anything, a few grants, because most of it's provided by Cal Berkeley and the nonprofit sector, Berkeley Rep., et cetera. That is all they do. You look at that and you go, gee, we're doing so much more. But unfortunately, because of social distancing requirements and the threat of this pandemic continuing for the long haul, we are unable to open the doors to our theater and to many, many of our programs or be able to provide them in an appropriate socially-distanced way. And so, what it's doing is it's making it impossible to be able to, the, the work isn't there, the revenues aren't there, so we don't, we can't offer the programs. And that is incredibly sad. And so, um, and I, and I wish we could do more on that regard. What I am thankful for, as we came to this, as we come to the closure of this tonight, is that this has shown us an opportunity to restructure some things internally and in different departments and organizations, which may um, lead to efficiencies over the long haul because a number of our financial crises don't, won't go away once there's a vaccine because there are also public employee pension costs that will continue to, um, plague us for the next fifteen years or more. I am, I think I'm cautiously, I, I would agree with, um, Councilmember Francois in saying that I believe this strikes the right balance in terms of, or it minimizes the number of layoffs that we have, and we're optimistic that the early incentive, the early retirement incentive program and other negotiations might yield fewer layoffs while still at the same time saving the, making the cost reductions that we need. I am happy that we've been able to set aside six hundred thousand dollars that will help to fund diversity and inclusiveness training, listening sessions, responding to um, additional training. And it's not just stand-up in the classroom training. I was in the training and development industry for more than twenty-five years, and training does not just mean stand in the classroom and some head talking at you. It's, it's a term that means a variety of ways to increase skills and to create, increase the aptitude and attitude toward, um, a change in behavior. I'm particularly pleased that, and I want to thank the mayor for taking the, the lead. We've been looking for this, on reaching out to the Board of Supervisors and what you're going to do Thursday night and reaching out and talking with the mayors from the rest of the, of the other eighteen cities and trying to get them on board and advocating with us, with the county, for an improved and enhanced approach to um, a non-police response to mental health crises. So, thank you. And many of us will be there with you. So, I am, I'm really glad that we will be able to work with the Library Foundation and the county to find a way to fund additional hours starting in January. And I think a separate motion with regard to that would be important here. Um, and I appreciate the foundation's willingness to come on board. I think, um, the Walnut Creek Friends of the Library as well, and I believe the Ignatia Valley Friends of the Library may be willing to as well and are just waiting to see what we do. But we do have to have that conversation with the county to really find what they are willing to do and able to do come January. The, um, the other things that I would say I am happy about in this budget is that we will still be funding all of the, um, Community Development Block grant recipients, the Crisis, the Contra Costa Crisis Center, Shelter, Inc., all those organizations that help us deliver to those who are in need through our region of the county, as well as, um, I think we're going to be providing almost three hundred thousand dollars in funding toward homeless services, and that's not counting what it costs for the, um, police outreach team that helps with the homeless. And that's not counting what it costs for the police outreach team that helps with the homeless. I also am very excited. A lot of people don't realize that for more than 15 years Walnut Creek has been committed to providing for affordable housing in Walnut Creek. And we have created nearly 500 units, and I think another 100 maybe in the pipeline. And that is something we do silently. We do it with the development community. We've had our predecessors establish affordable housing funds that have allowed us to collect nearly $30 million that help us leverage and help us support the building of 100% affordable housing projects. And that is different than what communities our size are typically able to do in the state. It makes us akin to communities in large cities like Berkeley, or like Oakland, or San Jose, or San Francisco. And I just want to be able to reach back and every day thank our predecessors for establishing those funds and really doing the heavy lifting in 2002 and '03 and '04 and '05 to adopt those programs for us. The, I think the use of reserves, I understand what Councilmember Riddell says, and I wish, I would be mindful that in order to do some of the things that he says we're not doing, we would have to reach into reserves because he didn't offer a way to fund library hours or capital programs that we are going to not do this year, which is about $100,000, $140,000 of funding. But our formula has not changed for what we're funding. But I will, I think I will close on just saying that the, I have heard from all parties. I have listened carefully through 10 meetings, both at the Finance Committee and at the council level. And I have also received numerous private emails and phone calls and text messages and casual conversations on street corners as I wander downtown or through the community. And there has been a debate, pro and con, but a very large membership of this community truly believes that we have an exemplary police department. It can deserve improvements. They're happy to know that we're looking for a non-police response to certain types of calls. But our police department and our funding of our police department and our staffing of our police department is in sync with other cities in Contra Costa County because we have the data. It is in sync with the Bay Area, including Berkeley, and it's even in sync with places like Eugene, Oregon, and Springfield, Oregon, who have the CAHOOS program. So we can do better. But I truly appreciate our police department, and I will reiterate what Councilmember Francois said during the last campaign for City Council. The campaign spending limit was $185, campaign contribution limit was $185 per person or per organization. We have the most stringent campaign finance laws in this state, and I work at the state level. And my colleagues across the state look confused when I tell them how low our number is and how it stretches across four years, not just a single year. In the last election, which I was up for election when Councilmember Francois was elected, I raised, I raised over $55,000. The average contribution was about 130, which means 400 to 500 people contributed to that campaign. That's a lot of people. Those are a lot of individuals. It was not from the police department, and it was not from police officers. And I am happy to open up my campaign finance documents because they're public. In fact, they're posted. So thank you very much again for all of you. I will be supporting all three resolutions for the adoption of the budget, and I will also be supportive of a motion on the library hours. Your pro tem.
Thank you. Thank you to staff who has been working nonstop over these last couple of months to put down a budget together and all the work that you've done. And thank you to everyone who's commented and wrote in and spoken tonight, the last four, five, six weeks. A lot of people who have never spoken before, never come to a city council meeting before, and have written in about areas about the city budget that are important to you. Over the last month, I've participated in no fewer than six meetings about the budget for next year. And then going back the previous month, probably another four or five meetings about the budget for the fiscal year ending in 2020, or in June. And that doesn't include all the meetings about the budget regarding the needed emergency measures for and everything else that we were trying to make sure that we had money to keep the city running. I've received hundreds of emails and letters, phone calls, texts, and more comments than I can, that can remember, in addition to the many people who've spoken or written into City Council over the past month. They've all been helpful in understanding what's important to our community as a whole and how we should use that as a guide. I hope these people understand that we receive impassioned comments on many, many issues, often with opposing viewpoints. Comments I made last week are still highly relevant. Rather than repeat them, my comments tonight will be more specific and probably dovetail with them. The number one goal for the City Council tonight is coming up with an approved budget for the next fiscal year. We cannot be derelict in this duty. While I've made my concern known regarding areas of the budget that I disagree on over the past months, I respect the decision the council has had with city staff. Many questions have been answered and directives given throughout the process, some of which is occurring right now, like the Diversity and Inclusivity Committee, as well as direction of working closer with the county in the mental health crisis responses that don't require an armed response from police. But ultimately, we need to pass a balanced budget by law with appropriate direction and not avoid our duty. My goals from that point are about how to improve our community for everyone. Longtime homeowners, newer apartment residents, older residents, young families, people of color, students, people who use our roads, those who use public transit, those who love the arts, and people who prefer the pools, or our sports teams, lovers of open space trails, and of course, those that enjoy shopping and dining in town, and so much more than all of that. People also appreciate that Walnut Creek has been known as a safe city, and I wouldn't want that to change. Last week, I said how it pained me that there are members of our community, particularly people of color, that do not feel safe in our city, and that absolutely needs to be addressed. And while we have started down that path, it will continue to be addressed. And I thank members of FOSAF for continuing to alert us to the situations that are happening around us and ones that we may not be as familiar with. Ton and Scott Hall have said many times about how safe they felt in Walnut Creek until the death of their son, Miles. And that makes all of us grieve right along with them. But their pain will never go away, and we need to make sure that we can continue to address the issues that people feel unsafe in Walnut Creek and work to make sure that everybody can feel safe. Regarding our reductions in departments, the Public Works Department, and I should first say that any layoff is more than we wish could happen. It's, I mean, these are people with names and faces and families, and it's a shame that we have to have reductions at all. But the Public Works Department is probably the most important department that is overlooked by our residents the most. We take working signals and smooth roads and well-groomed parks all for granted. They do that and 100 other things on a daily basis. There are some of the most dedicated, hard-working employees we have. They love Walnut Creek and are all friendly. To lose any through layoffs due to the fiscal crisis is a tremendous loss. The Arts and Rec Department is probably the department residents and visitors see most frequently, and it's what helps puts Walnut Creek on the map as one of the top destination cities in the Bay Area. My own background in the arts, both professionally and in having served on the Arts Commission for six years. And what family hasn't enjoyed an arts program and a sports program in a class, or pools, or one of the shows at the Leshur Center? And we've talked about this from several other comments tonight. But due to COVID-19 shutdowns, we can't even open some buildings or have classes. Without the facilities being able to be used, we just can't keep some employees when their program isn't available during this time. The awful thing is that this wouldn't even be needed if it weren't for the pandemic shutdowns because many programs pay for themselves through tickets and fees. I trust our Arts and Rec Director and staff to keep a close eye on things so that as soon as facilities and classes can reopen and it's safe for people to be in the classes and buildings again without the necessary social distancing protocols, or even if there are some of them, but they're relaxed a bit, that we'll be prepared to rehire staff where we can and as soon as we can. I'll talk about the libraries a bit, which I'm pleased to hear has been brought up by all of my colleagues so far. A city library is often a community center for a city. That is certainly the case in Walnut Creek with our two libraries. The downtown library specifically is the most used building in the city. And to condense the hours, the baseline 35 hours the county provides, makes me concerned for how many people could use it. And we also need to take into consideration that the Pleasant Hill Library is closed for construction for perhaps the next two years, and there may be Pleasant Hill residents also using the Walnut Creek Library. I understand that currently the library isn't even open to walk-in users. It may not be for the rest of the year. But I want to be prepared for that. I'd like for the council to direct the city manager and mayor to put an agenda item for discussing library hours on an upcoming agenda in October. This should give us enough indication that the libraries will be open in January, working with the county, and still have enough time to have the county staff there. The Library Foundation has generously come up with about half the money needed to support an additional 17 hours for the libraries. And I want us to be able to take a vote when we know more about the COVID-19 situation in the fall. Before we conclude this meeting, I'd like staff to receive that direction. Now, the police department has been the subject of many speakers and correspondents. We've reduced the department, though not as much as some residents would want and more than other residents would like. As outlined on the staff report, we'll lose some admired services like the participation of county-wide vehicle theft operations and reduction in debate program, which limits the ability to proactively address property theft. When I asked the police chief last week what cuts would become next if we lost just 10% of our sworn officers, he said the most likely losses would be to our school resource officers, the homeless outreach team, and the Broadway Plaza officer, along with the delayed response to 911 calls. While I believe that we can have better options for unarmed responses on certain calls and advanced skills training that will help us provide the police force we'd like to see handle some of those kinds of situations, I am not ready to lose the officers noted above that are receiving almost universal acclaim for the job they're providing for safety for our schools, our homeless or people without shelter, and downtown visitors. This does not mean we'll forget about the issues that have been brought up from residents, advocates, and protesters. We'll need to address them as well and become more nimble in our ability to change with the times. We need to show that we understand the issues, and we are working to address and respond to them in meaningful ways. Ultimately, we'll need to work with the county on some of this. And our police department, which will now be asked to be better trained and skilled, is best equipped to work with them on the kind of responses needed. The budget that we're voting for does not mean business as usual for the police department. It means extra dedication to the challenges we are hearing from our community and officers embracing the advanced training along with diversity, inclusivity, and anti-bias training. Prove to the community that the funding you have received will be used in the ways that have been asked for with these advanced skill sets, and that your department is best equipped to handle those roles with the appropriate responses, both armed and unarmed, along with compassion and professionalism that I know the Walnut Creek Police Department has. And regarding the use of reserves, I've discussed my reticence to use reserves previously. But if I, if ever there was a need to use catastrophic funds, especially seeing as how pandemic is listed as an approved reason, this is it. If it keeps programs and services going, it keeps the city open, and it keeps, and it keeps people from being laid off that don't have to be. And I am confident that we'll be able to replenish it in the next year or two. The various departments and services are all important, and we're doing our best saving what we can. And hopefully, we can get back to a full staff when COVID-19 is enraging our cities as it has been doing. I want it noted for the record that I have a firm no on the issue of the library hours reduction. I also would like staff, as we've talked about, to work closely with the schools to ensure there will still be crossing guards and to come back to the Public Education Committee with a report on their September 1st date. This is important. We need to make sure that our children's lives are the most important thing in the world. And I want to ensure that vigorous discussions will be occurring with the county for their coordination in addressing mental health crisis responses. I'm encouraged by the response that we originally made to them and their response back, as well as the response back from FOSAF, and we need to keep this momentum going. So those discussions need to continue at an aggressive pace. And again, I just want to thank everyone for being here in the late hours with us all these past weeks and months as we work through this challenging budget. I have confidence that Walnut Creek will be a better city in the future and that with the, with all of the input that we continue to receive and with the dedication of our staff and our council, that we will succeed in just that. And those are my comments.
Thank you. Well, there was a lot of good information in what my fellow colleagues have delivered. I'm going to spend a little time actually talking about me. I came to the council because of my particular interest and passion for the arts and for recreation and the library and all of the things that in Maslow's theory of needs are on the higher end. And gratefully, Walnut Creek was in a place where we could deliver on those services. With regard to the police, I will tell you that the first time I ran, they actually sort of ignored me and didn't even endorse me. The second time I ran, I think they paid even less attention to me. So I can assure you, there was no money in my budget for any, from any funding from the police department. I will point out, though, that sometimes the good things that the police department do doesn't get any attention at all. We've gotten so used to it that we don't see all the things that they were. The things that I thought of, that we even saw tonight, were things like the pictures of the officers doing wellness checks for our seniors. The homeless outreach project, which actually depends on those officers getting out and getting to know the homeless that we have in our community on a personal basis so that they know when the time is right to offer them services. They also do category malbehavior, and they have, and the homeless people have begun to trust them as their friends and their protectors because they help keep the homeless people safe. I also want to say how the police behaved when the protest was held at our house. They made sure that the protesters could walk from Heather Farm down the four-lane main street of Ignatio safely. They stopped the traffic. They were, the protesters were allowed to come into the neighborhood, and they were, and they, when they got in front of our house, the police were watchful, but they let the protest occur. That is an amazing statement. That is the opposite of what your experience was when, on June 1st. They have learned from the things that didn't work out. The things that didn't work out had never happened before, so there wasn't anything to base their behavior on. They had to kind of wing it. They're learning, and they do a really good job of learning on the job. With regard to the council, and in the comparison to other cities and the politics that are involved in that, we can make all the promises we can make on the issues. The problem is that implementing those promises are sometimes very difficult, and the unintended consequences of those rash statements and rash cuts are more dangerous than we care. All of the changes must be done with due respect for what is good and valuable about our city and with forward-looking opportunities. I submit to you I submit to you that sometimes statistics taken under their, under their own self can be manipulated immensely. Of course, it looks like our police got an increase. And that's because everything else had to fall so much because it wasn't necessary or it couldn't be done under COVID. It was really, really, if we held the line and made sure that our officers and our safety held tightly, then everything else made it look like it had this giant increase. It didn't. It actually was reduced as well. So you have to be careful when you quote statistics. You have to be careful about comparing San Francisco, which is not only a city, but a county. And when you compare cities like San Jose that have way more problems in terms of their officers and and way more people and way more money to spend, even if they have less than they used to. So be very careful about pointing out statistics. One city doesn't actually equate to another city. Finally, I'd like to thank everybody. I've gotten, I've gotten, I've learned to say we and they, they and them. As many times I've learned to not be gender, excuse me, gender-specific about names. I've learned that even though I try to be the very nicest person a person can be, I sometimes fail. I support the fact that it is extremely scary to testify. I think to testify before a city council is a scarier job than actually being on the council during a COVID pandemic. So I applaud what you have done. I applaud our staff for holding it together, showing up for work when the work was available, readapting how they do it when they did it from home. Nobody feels very confident that we know what the next couple of years are going to be like. I wish I could say I, who am one of the most optimistic, forward-looking, happy people, am really scared about what's coming down the pike. We don't have anything to base our judgments by. We're just lying by the seat of our pants. So I agree with the motion for the library. I agree that we have come up with the best compromise that we possibly can in terms of making the budget. And I am ready to ask for motions and shall we start with the easy one and start with the library? So may I have a motion?
I'll do that. I'll make that motion. So I would like, I would like to make the motion to direct staff to come back to city council in the first meeting in October to discuss the opportunity to work with the Library Foundation and the county to staff library hours at 17 hours a week for the two libraries from January through June.
Second.
I'm going to make an amended motion, a substitute motion.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I would move that we direct staff to work with the county to determine what the funding necessary would be to provide various levels of additional hours. And not because Mayor Protem, 17 might be more expensive than 19. And we've already heard that. So I want to be cautious that we don't, aren't overly prescriptive. And that we return to council with adequate time for us to be able to fund it for the new year. And that would be my motion.
I'm okay with that. I'll second that.
Okay, I'm going to need help here. If it's a substitute motion, that one gets voted on first, as I remember.
Yeah.
And it has a first and a second. So may I have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Silva.
Hi. Oh, you've lost your mic.
Councilmember Riddell.
Hi.
Councilmember Francois.
Hi.
Mayor Protem Wilk.
I, yes, but I want to make sure when you're saying with adequate time, does that mean early October? You're not putting a timeframe on that?
With adequate time for funding in the, in the new year. That's, staff can figure that out with the county. I mean, we don't need to say October 1st. It might have to be October 10th. Let's not.
Aye.
Mayor Haskier.
Aye. And here, here's where I need an additional help since the amended
Substitute motion one, it, no more work.
Okay, so we've taken care of that. What is the next item that we need to get a motion on?
I'll make a move to adopt the resolution appropriating the operating budget expenditures for the period of July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2021.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion in a second. May I have a roll call vote, please?
I would just note if I could, I believe it's the amended resolution. Is that correct, Kirsten and Steve?
Yes.
That's correct.
Thank you. I couldn't remember which one was amended. Thank you.
Councilmember Silva.
Hi.
Councilmember Francois.
Hi.
Councilmember Riddell.
Yeah.
Mayor Protem Wilk.
I, along with the noted record of the no on the issue of the library hours reduction for now.
Mayor Haskier.
Aye.
Motion carries four to one with the initial, with the additional comment from Mayor Protem Wilk.
Thank you. Is there any other item that needs to be dealt with?
Move to adopt the resolution appropriating the capital budget expenditures for the period of July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2021.
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Riddell.
Aye.
Councilmember Francois.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Wilk.
Aye.
Mayor Haskier.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
And adjusting the fees.
Move to adopt the resolution adjusting the fees and charges for various municipal services and activities.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Riddell.
Aye, sorry.
Councilmember Francois.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Wilk.
Aye.
Mayor Haskier.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
I believe we are at the end of the meeting. It is nice to go say goodbye sometime before midnight. I appreciate all the work that everybody has done. I hope and pray that by this time next year, we will be back to a more educated, a more diverse, a more happy time. And so with that, I declare this meeting adjourned until our next regular meeting. Thank you and good night.